Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 26, 2024, meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we get started today, I have a few housekeeping items. So if you have a cellphone with you, please silence or turn off your phone. Regarding speaking, we have a lot of people that want to be heard today. If you're here to speak on an item and you are not the applicant, please fill out one of these forms available outside or from staff and provide that to our staff members down here. When the item is heard, you'll be called to come to the podium. Please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes, up to five minutes, to speak. Mr. Butler here will give you a 30-second warning when your time is up. If you're here to speak on an item, which I believe this is the case today, with a large group of people, and we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns. If that's the case, some additional time will be given to those speakers. Where several speakers are heard on the same item, please do your best to limit repetitious comments and concerns. We just don't want to hear... We understand the main points and we want to try and reserve the right to limit extensive and repetitious comments, just to keep the meeting moving. Please direct all your comments and questions to the commission. If needed, we will ask staff or the applicant to respond to those questions. Finally, we appreciate everyone's presence here today and the time that you've taken away from your other obligations. And we just ask for your assistance in upholding the decorum of this meeting. And we ask that you please do not speak from the audience, only when you're called to the podium. And we encourage dialogue and differing viewpoints. And we understand the passion that you have for your neighborhood and your community. And we just ask that you maintain a respectful and civil environment. With that, we are ready to begin with the receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to receive the minutes from September 12, 2024.
A motion to receive the minutes from the September 12 Planning Commission meeting. That item has been seconded. Please cast your votes. And the minutes are received. That brings us to item three, which is continuance requests.
Uncontested requests. We have five. Item 12, S.P.U.D. 1666 deferred to October 10. Item 13, P.U.D. 2030 requests deferred to October 24. Item 14, accessory dwelling ordinance deferred to October 24. Item 15, case PC 10945 deferred to December 12. And item 16, case S.P.U.D. 1669 deferred to January 9.
I do have someone signed up to speak on item 12 that would like to be heard. Maya Whitehead? Could you please come to the podium, please? So just so that you understand, so this item is being deferred to a meeting on October 10?
Yes, sir, but we at the neighborhood meetings did not get any notification of that deferment. And the last meeting, you said to come here. So I came here, I took time off. I'd like to be heard because I don't know if this is going to happen again, and I kind of don't want the rug pulled underneath my feet.
Okay.
So may I begin?
You may begin.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'm calling to question... Well, not to question, but I'm asking as a member of the neighborhood regarding S.P.U.D. 1666 to... For the application to be rezoned from a 1, R1, to a R1, R2, R3, R4, to be denied or to be amended to just an R1, R2. The reasons for that, I wrote a letter, you should have received it about the beginning of this month. Have you guys received it? I addressed it to... I addressed it to Mr. David Cunningham on September 4. It had a list of all the neighborhoods who were also against that application for rezoning. And our primary concerns are, one, disrupting the neighborhood aesthetic so that the neighborhood does not look the way it does. Most of these houses are R1 residences. They're small, the roofs are only about 15 or 20 feet. This spud makes changes to a roof height of 45 feet, which is almost three times the height of the average home. The other homes, they want to put at least 20-type residents in this one, like maybe about seven, like really small city lots. We're worried about pollution. They want to have a dumpster. We're worried about noise pollution from potential tenants. We're also mainly worried about the increase of building this type of structure due to the increase in property taxes. A lot of the residents on there are elderly residents. They couldn't be here today. Some are working, some are retired, but they're in their 60s and their 70s. They worked their whole entire lives to have their residence. And a residence of that stature would possibly increase the property taxes so that these people are forced to evict their homes. I think that the people behind this, Placekeepers LLC, are not recognizing of that, and it ultimately leads to gentrification of people who've been there in their homes for their entire lives. So what I'm proposing is that the application be denied, flat out. They may have the opportunity to amend it to a R1, R2, which would be like a duplex. We do not want a parking lot. We do not want a dumpster. We do not want 20 residents condensed into seven lots, for the reasons in my letter. I'm making these complaints today for the posterity of our arguments. They did not come to our neighborhoods. They did not seek out what we would like to do, or if we were even amendable to these decisions before they decided to do this. And so for all of those reasons, also, please see my letter, again dated September 4, addressed to David Cunningham, for those issues. Like I said, potential solutions, deny, and then they can amend their application to a R1, R2. Or another solution, if they can't do that, make a trust fund for the neighborhood... Neighbors in that neighborhood who are affected by the increase, the exponentially high increase in property taxes, structure that they're trying to build, I think would probably, possibly be about an increase of between $3 million and $15 million. And most of the homes on that block are about $175,000. So can you imagine the increase in property value that would affect those residents? Also, property taxes are affected... The value of a home, I think the county puts a 1%... 1 percentage of the entire home. So if your property is about $200,000, your property taxes for the year is about $2,000. So imagine what a $3 million to a $15 million structure would do to... So pretty much, like I said, forcibly evict. They're welcome to make a trust, put a couple of neighbors who have been there on the board of the trustees, who could handle that trust, to pay off the overage, the unexpected overage of the increase in property taxes. That's also a solution. So that's what I'm thinking about. Maybe they can come and talk to us, but I definitely think it would be... It should be denied because these people, including myself, I'm a single mom, I'm a Navy veteran.
30 seconds remaining.
I've worked very, very hard to have my home. These people have also worked very hard to get their homes and attain the American dream. So who are these people? What gives them the right to take it away from us? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, I'll give you a second, but I want to ask Commissioner Pennington if he has any...
Yeah, just a few comments quickly. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead, for coming. And I know the process is very confusing. So it's not surprising to me at all that you'd be like, are they going to move it again? What's going on? I better just show up now while I have time. So appreciate you being here.
No worries.
What I can tell you is that we are also concerned about the character of your neighborhood being respected with whatever development that happens. That is... That's related to the height. That's related to who is being invited to live in these new places. We're concerned about those things as well. Have you heard that Placekeepers is going to host a meeting on Monday?
I did, but it's like putting the proverbial cart before the horse. The damage is done. You decided to do what you did, and you did it without input from us and without little care of how that neighborhood is going to look. There... If you look at the spud 1666, there are no height specifications to these dwellings. So they could be 15, but they say in their spud 1666, 45 feet. Well, that's the approximate value of three houses stacked upon themselves. So you... You know, it just... And it's in the middle of the block. So you have one single R1 on one side, this monstrosity, and then a couple other houses. It ruins the aesthetic. And also, like I said, they want to put a parking lot in the back, and they want to put a dumpster. I don't know if you know the city trash people. I'm not trying to trash the trash. But they picked their stuff out in the front, so how are they going to get around these dumpsters? We do not have conventional alleys in this neighborhood. So I don't understand how they're going to egress to get these dumpsters. And people... We in that area have been prone to, and I've made several city complaints, about dumping, illegal dumping. So a dumpster would invite even more of that. And I don't want to see my investment trashed. I mean, if they like it so much, they should build it in their own neighborhood.
Well, and I think all of that is understandable.
Okay.
And so the goal of the meeting is to ensure that we have heard good feedback from the neighbors, and then for Placekeepers to go back to the drawing board and come back and present something to the neighbors, get their feedback again, and see what we can do to try to work through those challenges. But I appreciate you sharing those concerns with me, and I hope that you'll consider coming to the meeting on Monday and sharing those concerns as well. I will be there and hoping we can really just listen and figure out what the next phase of this will be.
Sure. A lot of the neighbors I've already spoken to, and they are completely vehemently against this. Like, they may need to come up with some figures. I'll try to rally, but if you look at the letter, I have signatures from about 11 people, and there are seven dwellings on that block.
All right. Thank you for coming down. Mark, you want to respond?
I was just going to note that we do have a neighborhood meeting scheduled, and the outreach actually started in June, not in August. They have a meeting booked out there. And so we're happy to continue meeting. We'll do as many meetings as we need to until we reach a resolution. But just want to note the meeting on the 30th.
And if she doesn't have it already, if you wouldn't mind sharing your contact info with Ms. Whitehead?
Who is he?
This is a representative for the applicant of the project.
Oh. You do know the neighborhood is like 90% African-American, right?
As is the developer.
Okay.
So the developer is Placekeepers, and that is an entity controlled by the Northeast Oklahoma City Renaissance.
That's noted. I was just wondering if there was cultural, like...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. So we just need a motion to... For the uncontested continuance request?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the uncontested request as read.
We have a motion to approve the uncontested continuance request as read. It's been seconded. Please cast your votes. And those continuances are approved. New requests?
We have one new request. Item 1, KC 7682, request to defer to October 24.
Is there anyone here to be heard on item 1? All right. Seeing none, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new continuance as read.
We have a motion to approve the new continuance request. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the new requests are approved. All right. Item 4, the consent docket.
I'm sorry. Item 2, right?
Yeah, we'll start with item 2.
Oh, gotcha. Item 2, KC 7684, final plat of Lexford Park, Phase 2. This is located north of Northwest 36th Street and northeast of North Walker Avenue.
All right. So we have the one item on the consent docket. We just need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket with item number 1.
Do you want to...
I'd like to have item number 2, consent.
To be heard individually?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, just need a motion to pull it and be heard individually.
I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion to pull item number 2 from the consent docket.
A motion to hear item 2, remove it from the consent docket, be heard individually. Just need a second. That item's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. All right. So now we will hear item 2.
Mark Sitzow with Johnson &amp; Associates addresses Winnie Sheridan Avenue. Well, I appreciate the staff putting the item on consent because it conforms with all the subdivision regulations and the regulations within the P.U.D. I want to point the Planning Commission to page 5 of the staff report, specifically letters N and O. If you recall, when this zoning preliminary plat in Phase 1 came through, we talked at length about the need to have a variance to the traditional right-of-way standards for this project, particularly for this section of the development as it narrows because of the creek and the off-ramp. And so that variance was actually approved for Phase 1 and with the preliminary plat. So I was a little surprised to see in the staff report what Public Works has noted was that the 50-foot right-of-way is required, and if we do not, the streets have to be private. We did extensive community engagement on this and have committed to the neighborhood that the streets and the sidewalks would be public so that they could not be gated and become a different neighborhood within the Edgemere Crown Heights. So, you know, I don't know if we need to vote on the variance again, if this page could ... Or this language could be struck from the staff report. I just want to make it known that we fully intend to move forward with the plat with 40-foot right-of-ways and 10-foot easements when we get to recordation.
Okay. Do we have any idea whether this was an error in the staff report, or do we have someone from Public Works?
I knew a guy here at Public Works. I think we can look at the variance. I was not aware of it. We can double-check.
Okay. I mean, I recall that conversation, so...
And it was very specifically a point of discussion and negotiation in the process of approving the zoning and the previous plat, so...
The concern I have is, once this is approved, it's the last opportunity for this to be worked out through this board that had already approved it. And then we're at plans with Public Works that we don't get the opportunity to come back and talk with you if there's an issue. So I think as long as everyone is aware that that's what we're doing and everyone's in agreement, and it's stated here, you know, we're fine. But that's the concern.
Given the variances there, I think that comment could be pulled out, the T.
I think we should strike it.
Is there some action we need to take? I mean, it's a comment in the staff report.
Do we... T.E. to remove N and O?
A T.E. to permit the 40-foot right-of-way width?
I don't think you have to do that because that's already in the variance. I think you just fix the staff report.
Oh, but going forward to council, although this is plat, so this... We're it.
Yeah. Yeah. Strike the items.
Strike the items.
Okay. All right. So yeah, I think we can approve this with just the striking N and O in Section 2 of the staff report. It would be 7, sub 2, items N and O. Janice, this is Ward 2.
Yes. So if we don't have any further discussion, I'll move approval. C 7684, the final plat of Lexford Park, Phase 2, with a stipulation that the streets will be 40-foot, not 50-foot, as indicated by the previously granted variance.
Right-of-way?
Yes. The right-of-way, yes.
All right. I have a motion to approve...
And the notation that the streets will be public, not private.
I have a motion to approve C 7684, subject to the language as read in by Commissioner Powers. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.
Item 3 is case PC 10948, application to rezon 15710 Northwestern Avenue from P.U.D. 1619.
Good afternoon. Mark Sitzow, Winnie Sheridan Avenue with Johnson &amp; Associates. Before you, it's a bit of a unique case in that it's kind of a cleanup. The last engineer that had worked on this property had included the remainder tract of the seller's land with the P.U.D. We believe they just used the deed and not what would have been the preliminary plat legal. And so ultimately, what's happened is the Hoffman family, who owns the house and the lot in black on your screen, was inadvertently put into a P.U.D. that does not allow access off of their current street and drive. And so what we're doing is filing an R1 application to bring it back to what it was prior to the Waterstone development. Our office spoke with Ms. Heist. I don't know if she's here today, but we shared that this was not a continuation of the Waterstone development, believe that satisfied the concern, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Pennington, this is Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have met with the applicant about this. This is simply cleanup. And the applicant's also met with the one letter of opposition and straightened things out about what the intention is of this rezoning application. So I'm in full support and prepared to make a motion.
All right. Any other Commissioners have any comments? All right. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we... Move to recommend approval of PC 10948 to City Council.
I have a motion to recommend PC 10948 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Thank you. Item 4.
Item 4 is case PC 10947, application to rezon 11701 North Sarah Road from P.U.D. 789 to R2.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is taking the site from what is essentially straight C3 under P.U.D. 789 to a duplex development. We will retain the frontage as commercial. This was owned quite some time ago, as you can tell by the number. Commercial development at this depth is just not likely to be something that the market would demand, and so we're trying to make a better use of the property. So duplex behind what will be a future commercial along the Northwest Expressway. Staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
This is Ward 1. Very straightforward application. I haven't had any communications of either protest or support, but I am in support of it. So if anyone else has anything, no, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve PC 10947.
A motion to recommend approval of item PC 10947, seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you. Brings us to items 5.
This is S.P.U.D. 1662, application to rezon 2416 Northwestern Avenue from NC and U.D. Design Overlay, and also 23rd Street Uptown Corridor Overlay District to S.P.U.D. 1662.
Daniel Douthat, Rolex Studio, 1141 West Sheraton, here on behalf of Millu LLC. This one's pretty straightforward. There was a restaurant on this lot for years. They tore it down. They're going to build a new restaurant. The setback along Western Avenue is 75 feet off the center line. The setback off the residential is 15 feet, so that leaves us negative 12 feet of lot to develop. So that's why we're rezoning.
That makes sense. Commissioner Powers, this is Ward 2.
The only concerns that I have about this have to do with, you know, like rooftop decks and that kind of thing. There are still two viable residential properties on this block. I don't know how long they'll continue to be viable residential properties. I mean, in the big picture, long-term, of the way this area is developing, I would not be too surprised if they were eventually removed and something more commercial were to replace them. But I do have some concern about protecting them as they exist. So would it be possible to design review? I didn't see anything in their recommendation that has... Limits that. Am I wrong?
Just as an update, the Urban Design Commission recommended approval yesterday.
Okay. So since there is no indication that there will be rooftop deck, and whatever it is they approved didn't include that, are we safe in approving this without more specific condition about that issue?
Rooftop deck has been eliminated from the spud document. It's two stories and 35 foot max. What we're planning right now is a one-story building that'll be about 16 foot to the top of the parapet. It'll have all the mechanical equipment screened. This is going to be a grab-and-go Asian restaurant.
But my staff report indicates that the maximum building height is still 35 feet, so...
Correct.
And...
Which if you look at an R1 zoning or R2 zoning next door, you can build that high as well. So someone could easily come in there and do a duplex on that site. Actually, there was a duplex there to the east that burned down, so someone could come in and possibly do that again.
I'm aware. But the impact of a duplex on residential neighbors is a little different than the impact of a restaurant with outdoor seating on residential neighbors, so...
We're not planning on having any outdoor seating currently.
There is a patio that's shown on the site plan on the east side of the property.
Do you have this updated? One on the screen, there was a shuffle between planning and UDC where we made some concessions to eliminate the patio between the R zoning and the commercial zoning. Is that the old one that's further back from 24th?
It must be.
Yeah. Sorry, that one, please omit that one. The one on the screen is the correct one, that UDC, and we've worked together and putting together.
So Sarah, does the setback of the building... So Sarah, does the setback of the building match the setbacks of the residential properties to the east?
Well, the immediately adjacent one is the one where the front building burnt down. They're not able to redevelop that because they have an accessory structure on there, so they're kind of in a little bit of a zoning pickle also. One moment. I'm sorry, is your question about their north setback?
Yes.
I'm unclear on what the question is.
Whether the setback of the building matches the visual setback of the residential structures to the east?
The front yard setback of residential structures to the east should be 25 feet. That appears to be the case. The residential, the setback that planning and UDC recommended was 10-foot minimum with zero at the front yard, 15-foot on the corner of the side off Western, and we're going to need to do that so we can both get a sidewalk in there and some trees. We've got some overhead power lines we're dealing with that are going to really limit making this a pleasant development that matches the city's standards for landscape.
My concern is about the placement of the building.
Yes.
I want to know if it is setback from the curb, the same distance as the residential properties to the east.
This, the 10-foot setback was the recommendation of the Urban Design Commission. And the SPOD has written where the Urban Design Commission has final say on setbacks and aesthetics, height, et cetera.
So I can't read what's in front of me here. It's just too tiny. I don't know if that's the right-of-way line I'm looking at there, or...
It says 40-foot, I think nine inches right-of-way.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
I was just going to say also, we included the staff... Because we didn't have a recommendation from the Urban Design Commission yet, we included their staff report.
Again?
And so the design staff notes on page two of three of their report at the bottom, Item C, that unless noted, all other case items of this proposal comply with the Development Regulations and Guidelines of the Urban Design Overlay District Zoning Ordinance as referenced below. And then they list both the maximum building height and the front building and side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks. This applicant worked extensively with our design staff to try to get the SPOD to a place that aligned with the existing design district guidelines and regulations.
Okay. Okay. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No.
If there aren't any other questions or comments from commissioners then, I'll move approval of item number five, SPOD 1662.
I have a motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval of City Council of SPOD 1662. Been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. That item passes.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with the project.
And ladies.
Item Six.
Item Six is SPOD 1663, application to rezone 7900 North MacArthur Boulevard from SPOD 79.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you is an SPOD for an existing business that's been in operation for quite some time. It's an out parcel at the front of a retail structure. They're a repair shop with kind of a small-scale auto sales, and so what they want to do is add about 1,000 square feet to the southern side of their building. Their current SPOD doesn't allow that, so what we've done is filed a new SPOD to allow for the addition, and in doing so, has allowed the opportunity to make improvements to the site because of the redevelopment. And so those improvements will be meeting the landscaping ordinance, including street trees, meeting the parking ordinance. We will be required to furnish a cross-access agreement with the retail center. Those two owners are friends and are working toward that. I want to make one thing clear. Cars awaiting repair and cars for sale are not permitted to be parked or staged within the retail shopping center property. The only cars parked there will be employees and customer parking. And so one thing that's a cleanup from the exhibit before you is that we've agreed to close the southern driveway to Wilshire, and what that did not capture is removal of the concrete. That will happen with the removal, and that's in the SPOD at the time that the new building permit goes in. There's one TE with staff. We worked through it. We're in agreement with that TE that will meet the sign ordinance, and I'd like to add one additional TE, and that is to state, no more than 16 cars awaiting repair or for sale shall be permitted on the property at one time. And so that's to prevent the, you know, the entire lot from just being filled with cars waiting repair or for sale, and so we are comfortable with that. That accommodates the eight cars under an awning and then the eight in tandem parking spaces that we have on the property today.
All right. Appreciate that, that second TE. This is Ward One. I am by here frequently, and I think this will be a nice improvement to this area, so I'm in full support. And if anyone else has any questions?
Glad we're removing one of the curb cuts. I can't even believe we allowed that design to look like that. It's wild, so glad we're cleaning this up.
This is really a very, very... We're talking about '70s development here, so this is a long time ago.
All right. I think we just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPOD 1663 with TE number one and the addition of TE number two, no more than 16 cars awaiting repair or sale allowed on the lot at any one time.
All right. A motion to recommend to City Council approval of SPOD 1663. Item's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Seven.
Item Seven is SPOD 1668, application to rezone 6901 South Main Street from AA.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm just... If you guys can see, there's my wonderful drawings. Just dilapidated buildings. The families owned those for 25, 30 years, and I just want to improve it. Several hundred thousand dollars of metal building, and I don't know... I'm wanting to keep... If you can see the Main Street setback, that's 30 feet, and even before Highway 152 and Airport Road were expanded, and that little town had a lot more traffic. There was never any issue there. The south side, the other Owens, our building and his building are literally on top of each other. I'm going to pull that back to the north 10 feet to allow equipment in there, obviously, to work, and there is no septic in the area, so that might be area for septic, too, on the south side. The west side, there's an easement. I don't know if it's 10 feet for each property owner or whatever it is. It's no problem because that's going to be a lot of area for just yard in the back, It's just an improvement.
Okay.
All those buildings on that lot, that whole block are just falling apart. Termites have gotten everything between Dudley and Ellis. And just a nice new two-tone building. It's not going to be an ugly metal building. Large door on the east side, north side and west side, but obviously nothing on the south side.
All right. Commissioner Meek, this is Ward Three. You got any questions or comments for the applicant?
No, I've already... I've already spoke to you and met with Blake on this. This is the old Wheatland Town, I believe, and it's the old... Correct me if I'm wrong, the old general store?
Sorry, it's grocery store.
Grocery store, yeah.
General store, post office and then...
Yeah, so the... We went through the application with him. He's agreeable to everything from staff. It has recommended approval. We have two TEs, and with the two TEs, I'm ready to make a motion unless any other commissioners have any. We don't have anyone signed up to speak.
No.
Okay. Stand by one sec. My notes are messed up here. Do you know the existing... Is there an existing septic system on the property?
There is.
Okay.
If I was there with you, I could show you where it's...
Okay.
It's not covered by any building. Now it's going to have to be removed.
Okay. All right, so there is an existing one. It probably will have to be relocated, but... And I know it's underneath a half acre that is normally our trigger, but overall, this is an improvement to the area. As I told Blake, we've done one right across the street from you, Catty Corner. That's just really made the area a lot nicer.
And the surrounding area.
Well, I would presume that if septic, it's not aerobic...
Right.
...with a spray field, so that's...
Yeah, as long as it maintains a septic, not aerobic. So with that, I want to recommend approval with the existing number-one TE. TE number two, we will change the building setback lines in Section Five to east at zero, west at 15 feet, south to be 10 feet, and north to be 5 feet. And then TE number three, that septic system is allowed but must not be aerobic.
Can I ask a question? We also spoke about the north. It's currently 15 feet from the road, and I talked about that extra five feet. I was there last night.
I can barely hear you. Can you speak up?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Would it be possible, since we're here, and this might be my only chance, to keep the north at zero feet because the current gradient and ditch and everything has been perfect through all the floods through all the years, and I don't know if I want to mess with any of that, and if I don't, then I would possibly take advantage of that five feet, which is the current line of the current building, just keeping it as is. But if that was a sticking point with you all, I'd have no choice but to back up five. If possible, I'd like to keep a zero setback on the north side where the current building is.
I mean, for me, it's very difficult to see what's going on with this site plan. I know it's old, you know, it's very difficult to read. We don't have a site plan on an aerial, so I'm having a hard time understanding the existing conditions, so...
Right. That'd be an answer for staff because what we show is a 20-foot easement to property line, and then your building would have to be on the north, five foot off that property So you'd still, according to this site plan, if it's correct, you'd still have 20 feet of easement. That's where the angled parking shown on the north.
20 and 10 on the south is 30 off of 90, which would leave enough room for the 60-foot building.
Give Sarah a minute.
I think if we're talking about, there's 20 existing. We're discussing whether or not we add another five to that. The existing parking condition in the existing building wall, the historic structure, it's at 20.
Yeah.
I don't personally have a problem keeping it that way, but I understand... How does that... I guess the point I'm raising is the angled parking and the maneuvering in the right-of-way is something that has to go through traffic for approval, right?
Yes.
And so irrespective of whether we say it's zero or five, that is subject to a process of permitting and review that may actually mean that you... 20 feet may not actually work in what they finally approved there, right?
And that's not kicked off till a building permit application, correct? Where Public Works reviews it on a commercial permit?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
The maneuvering in the right-of-way approval by Public Works, that happens at the time of the building permit with the commercial building permit.
And the angled parking.
Well, yeah. If the angled parking is located within the right-of-way, they can maneuver.
Okay.
We added a TE to allow them to maneuver within the right-of-way in the event that the parking was located either partially on or all on their own property.
On their property, okay, got it.
That is a zoning regulation, yeah.
Okay.
The parking in the past has always been just on the east side, Main Street, and west side of the building. On the north side, there's never really been any parking there. Sometimes a vehicle will pull up as in parallel parking.
Okay.
The north side isn't really important to me as far as parking goes.
Okay. So last question. Sarah, do you believe there's a 20-foot right-of-way on the north side to their property line?
We believe that it's 30, 30-foot to the section line of Dudley.
Okay.
60-foot total.
Which is consistent with the site plan, which shows a 20 plus 10 to the center line.
And the site plan, our understanding, is showing you the existing and then the proposed.
Okay. With that being said, and if you agree with me, Dan, it's usually a fire rating issue, and there's nothing ever going to be built on that north side, so I'm fine with the zero.
I am, too. That's particularly because it matches the existing building wall line that's historically been there.
Okay. I'll modify my TE then. So I'd like to recommend approval with the TEs as listed for number one, and the modification of TE number two to be zero foot setback on the east, 15 foot setback on the west, 10 foot setback on the south, and zero feet setback on the north. In addition, I'd like to add a TE number three, that septic system must not be allowed to be aerobic.
And that is up to the Department of Environmental Quality. What if they say, no, you must have aerobic. It's not perking right. I would think it would perk, but...
Well, to answer that question...
We're saying that's not allowed.
The problem I have when you take a lot and you build a building that covers the majority of the lot, it leaves nowhere for your spray field, and you can't spray that onto public streets and onto the railroad and onto other things, so you have to shrink your building and/or do whatever it takes to fit a septic system in. I'm ready to move for approval.
All right. So we have a motion from Commissioner Meek, subject to the amended technical evaluations, to recommend approval of SPOD 1668, City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. That item passes. Thank you. Good luck. All right. We are now at Item Eight.
This is PUD 2016, application to rezone 5900 Wildwood Drive from PUD 1842.
That guy's lucky he got out of here.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a PUD that you heard a month ago. It's had a couple deferrals to have some neighborhood meetings since the original filing of this application. Our office has had four neighborhood meetings, two this week, one on Monday and one on Tuesday during the wild September hailstorm, which was quite the experience. And then I know the neighbors have met on their own, and I know, I believe, Councilwoman Nice and Kamal had a meeting in addition that we did not attend. And so first, I want to thank... And so first, I want to thank Ms. Jackie Jordan and the Wildwood neighborhood. They've been very gracious in this process. Everyone's been very respectful and kind as we worked through. What I know for them was a very frustrating process, particularly on attractive land that's had multiple rezonings over the last five years. And so I appreciate all of their time and effort on this project. So what we're proposing is a multifamily development with a tract of single-family development. If you could go to the site plan, please. The site plan you're gonna see, one more, thank you, is modified from what you saw a month ago, and I wanted to walk through one of the largest changes, which was a directive of the, the residents that came and spoke here about a month ago. Tract one, we reconfigured a little bit. There was grave concern about the idea of a cross-access agreement, even if it was emergency access between one and two, and that a crash gate gets opened and it suddenly becomes a thoroughfare for the multifamily to make it through tract one and onto Wildwood Drive and ultimately through the neighborhood. We totally understood that. So what we did was we reconfigured tract one to have two entrances onto Wildwood. We flipped the lots to face Wildwood, so now it looks like the rest of Wildwood Drive where the homes front onto it. We maintain the same number of lots, so we removed that cross-access and are truly trying to be as intentful as possible in making this feel like a continuation of the Wildwood neighborhood rather than a pocket neighborhood within another neighborhood. So then in tract two, we've made a lot of other revisions, and that was on the list that was passed out that we hope can be adopted as part of the TEs. And this came from our neighborhood meeting on Tuesday as well as the other conversations. And so I'm gonna sum this up. I'll leave it up to the city attorney to tell me whether he wants this verbatim read in. This has been redistributed to staff earlier today, as well as the planning commission and the neighbors who provided email addresses, and that PUD document is dated September 25th. So while I sum these up, you can ponder whether you want them all read in verbatim. So we've reduced the density from 560 to 545. We clarified based on the TEs that were in your staff report, the difference between the landscape buffer and then the 50-foot wide protected green space. We've increased the fencing requirement to a six-foot in height stained and capped cedar fence. We have added to section 9.5 that the lots along Wildwood front into the neighborhood. We noted requirements about the detention pond needing to drain south into the ODOT stormwater system, not west into Oklahoma City's where the neighbors' homes are. We've, we are willing to work with the neighborhood to change the city's legal boundary of the Wildwood Heights neighborhood if the neighborhood votes and agrees with the city and/or the neighborhood alliance, so that tract one formally becomes part of the Wildwood neighborhood. And we did note to them that there will still be a homeowners association for the sole purpose of maintaining the detention pond that we're required to build. It was requested and we agreed to provide directional signage at our exits of tract two for the multifamily to encourage residents and visitors to use Santa Fe and avoid Braniff. We've actually reduced the height. There was a portion of the PUD that would have allowed 70 feet in height if we set back enough. We've struck that entirely, so now the maximum height that we can have is 45 feet. And then we added a no-build area. That was part of the clarification in the staff's TE. And then item nine, our developer has put into the PUD that will be enforceable, that we will be required to install speed humps or a traffic calming device pursuant to the city's ASAP program of up to four speed humps on Braniff or Wildwood Drive. That, of course, is subject to the neighborhood approval as well as the traffic commission, but that'll be at the expense of the developer for that program. And then one thing we added, I know this commission has struggled in the past with the specific plan not being publicly noticed. What we have put in there is that it is required of the developer to notify the HOA. We have a significant number of contacts for the neighborhood now, which we appreciate. And so at the time that they are ready to file a specific plan, they will notify the HOA president of the intention, so they know that the development is coming. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's been a significant amount of misinformation out there. I believe there were signs that said this was just 700 apartments. There's been a lot of questions. We've tried to give the best answers we can to everyone that's asked them, but we would ask for your recommendation of approval today.
Thank you. Commissioner Pennington, you'd like to lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I also want to join in, in saying thank you to our neighborhood leaders on all sides and of all opinions about this development. Appreciate all of the effort to listen. And I apologize, Mark, and I told you this before you got here, that I was going to tell you, I'm gonna lawyer you just a little bit. The attorney in me has to make sure that our neighbors are clear about exactly what's being proposed and about exactly how that compares to the existing zoning. So I'm gonna ask a lot of specific questions, so that as our neighbors come up and make their comments, they're making, they're making comments based on the facts and the truth. So I want to be very clear about that. I also want to be clear that I apologize that I wasn't able to be at the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday. It was my wedding anniversary, and while Hank's neighborhood meeting might seem like a romantic place to be on Tuesday for you, I'd like to stay married longer, so we were not there. But I, I think that it's also important for our neighbors to understand, and I've said this before, having served over this commission for six years, there is nothing more personal than what happens in your home. There is nothing more personal than what happens in your neighborhood. And for me personally, I'm impacted by the decisions that are made today with this development. My mother-in-law is a resident of this neighborhood. Our family, her family, my mother, my mother-in-law's family have been living in this neighborhood for decades upon decades. My own children are being raised in this neighborhood. So any discussion that's happening about what happens with this development directly affects me as it does our neighbors. So I want to start with this clear question. Number one, our neighbors are under the impression that if you, if this zoning application is not approved, that there will not, there are some neighbors who believe that there will not be any apartments constructed. Will there be apartments constructed if, if the planning commission does not approve of this development today?
Yes, so the existing PUD allows 522 apartments. This PUD sought to increase the number to 545. If this was denied, you will see a very similar apartment layout that you see on the screen. We already have that entitled from 2021.
So if the existing zoning remains the same, we make no changes, we recommend denial of this application today, there will be 522 apartment units that you intend to, you intend to construct because you already have the right to do so?
Correct. The developer intends to move forward with apartments regardless of whether this application is ultimately approved or denied.
Okay, so I also have neighbors who are under the impression that if this application is denied, that you will also construct commercial businesses in this area. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So this, the existing PUD does allow a multitude of commercial uses, because the original PUD sought more of a mixed-use style development. The developer that owns and controls this property today is a multifamily developer, has no intention of parcelling off or developing commercial on their own. They fully intend to do a similar concept to what you see on the screen.
So they have the right to build commercial buildings, but at this point, you're telling me that the developer's intention is not to construct commercial businesses? Their intention is to construct apartments?
Correct.
Okay, so is there a connect, is, does the existing zoning allow a connection between the apartments and the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood?
No.
Does the new zoning allow a connection between the existing apart, these apartments and the neighborhood?
No, it does not.
No connection, not even a connection through the single-family development?
No.
Okay, so does the new zoning require, excuse me, does the old zoning that's currently in place, does that require that there be signage directing traffic from the apartments onto Santa Fe rather than Braniff?
No.
Does the new, does the current zoning require the developer to provide financial assistance to the neighborhood to provide traffic calming devices on Braniff Avenue?
No, it does not.
Does the existing zoning, what is the buffer that the existing zoning requires between the apartments and those homes that are on northeast 59th Street between Crestview Drive and Wildwood Drive? What is the required buffer between the apartments and those, those homes?
That was a 15-foot landscape buffer.
A 15-foot landscape buffer, and what is the requirement from the new zoning?
That's a 50-foot no-build area with the same 15-foot landscape buffer, so we increase the area of no-build.
Okay, so the unit count difference in apartment terms is between 522 to 545?
Correct.
Correct? That's what you're proposing today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I know we're gonna, I'm sure we have a number of neighbors who are signed up to speak, but I do think it's important that they be armed with accurate information about what's being proposed, so that they can respond to what is actually being proposed and the actual consequences of those choices. So happy to hear from our neighbors further.
I think that was good exercise. Okay, we will hear from Mr. Jerome Brown first. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Jerome Brown, 6008 Crestview Drive. My home sits right in the middle of this neighborhood. One of the reasons we wanted to live there is because of the tranquility of the neighborhood. I feel like this new development would just completely destroy that tranquility. Not that I'm gonna get progress, but you cannot put these many units in a neighborhood and not have it disrupt the neighborhood, if you will. Especially my original understanding that there would be no access through the neighborhood to the major arteries. Now, if there is access, it can not help but destroy the continuity of this neighborhood. Most of us there live there for one reason, because although we're bordered by a lot of highways, the neighborhood itself is still tranquil and quiet and peaceful. I want to continue to see that happen and not be surrounded by a mass development. If we cannot have more time to discuss this, I would suggest that we pass 1842. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Do you mind if I ask you just a few questions? Yes. 1842 is already in place.
Okay.
So that's the existing zoning, so that's the law right now.
Okay.
As far as this development having a connection to the existing neighborhood, there is not one for the, for the apartments. What's being proposed is that there also be single-family homes added off of Wildwood Drive. So those are not, but there's no connection between the apartment complexes and the existing neighborhood.
Okay.
And so as far as the connection between Braniff and Santa Fe and the service road, that is the state's, that is within the state's prerogative. We don't have, the planning commission, if I could will it today, cannot stop the state's access from the service road to Braniff or to Santa Fe. So I just wanted you to be aware that that's not something that we have the authority to be able to do.
Okay.
So even with, if we take no action or oppose this rezoning application today, it just means that there's gonna be apartments that are 522 as opposed to additional apartments. So, okay, just want to be clear that no matter what action we take, apartments are still on the table.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Courtney Gray. Not here? All right, we'll come back. Jackie Jordan requests to speak only if clarification was needed. No, okay. Victoria Hall Hooks.
Hello, you guys. I am here today standing in front of you, and I am a neighbor within the 300 feet from the proposed PUD 2016. The PUDs 2016 intends to build on 40 acres of the Wildwood Heights and Hills. I just want to talk about the impact on what it's gonna have on our neighborhood, the increased traffic, the raise of crime, and displaced wildwood, wildlife, and more. As a legal 300-foot neighbor, my neighbors and I will be directly impacted by 2016. And I was notified by regular mail that this project will be going on, and I didn't get it until June. I thought the notification was really late, but I can't do anything about that. I asked my neighbors, did they receive any of them, and most said no. So I informed them about the project, and they hadn't, they had no idea it was happening right up under the noses. So right now, I know the PD 842 is in place right now, which, that was placed in 2021 on a Zoom meeting during COVID. Nobody notified us about that either. We, none of, a lot of us didn't even know anything about that meeting. Also, I did some research between the two pod, PUUs, I mean PUDs, and 1842 and 2016, they look similar, but it is gonna be a lot of difference. The 1842 apartments have 522 plus eight houses, which equals 530 units. 2016 has 545 apartments plus 47 homes, which that is a total of 560 total units, which is adding 62 more units, which increase this by 12%, 12% from the 1842 apartments and houses. The traffic impact is different on 1842 than it is on 2016 also. The 1842 impact is less, less on the neighborhood. It has, the plan is directly connected to I-40, the service road. They have no access to our neighborhood streets on 1842. On 2016, the traffic impact is invasive. The new houses will have access to our streets, the new houses will connect to, directly to our streets, and now they're adding two more entryways to Wildwood. Also, in Oklahoma, Oklahoma City sign-proof regulations, it says in 1842, there are screening, there are screening regulations, and in 2016, they have no screening regulations. Also on the signs, in 1842 has been designed, the signage regulations about freestanding signs at the minimum of eight feet, 100 feet, two, two inches wide. So our, I guess that's how I see it, I don't know how to go, but it's no signage in there. And then on 2016, there's no regulations for any signage. Also, on the plotting, if I'm saying it right, it's P-L-A-T-T-I-N-G, that is dividing the plots. It's not no plotting in, in 1842 there is, but in 2016 there is not. And plotting, the way I read it, is very important if you're gonna sell these homes. If you don't have it plotted, I'm guessing you can sell, rent them or lease them. Also, 1842 allows businesses, which 16, 2016 does not. It doesn't mention anything about business. It also gives, 1842 has commercial offices and restaurants, which we would love to have some restaurants in that area. We have to go really far to go and get anything to eat if we would like to. And this one has restaurants in it, which restaurants also provides jobs in the neighborhood.
30 seconds remaining.
And so if there is anything farther to discuss, we would like to discuss things farther and would like more time on the PDU 2016, and I'm asking for more time so we can negotiate more. But if there, if it's not granted, our, the rest of us in the legal 300 feet would like to go ahead and just vote down PDU 2016 and just go with 1842 that's already standing.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
You know I do, and thank you for being here. You know I do, and thank you for being here. Um, just a few questions quickly. Let's talk about the signage. I'm not, I would assume that the sign code is in place, so it's not a limitless ability to, to create signs. So I wanna be, be clear about that. And when, when, after we've heard from all the neighbors, I'll ask Mark to come up and just explain exactly what that means, or city staff come up and explain exactly what that means. But this would have to just follow the city.
It would be city ordinance.
Yeah, it would be existing, the existing city code would be what's in place. So, but we can have them explain that to us, so, 'cause I don't even know. They can explain it to us both clearly.
Okay.
As far as your request for plating, again, I'll ask Mark to come back up, but I just wanna clarify, um, that when we're talking about plating, we're talking about how they're going to essentially lay out the lots.
Yes.
And so it has nothing, but it has nothing to do with whether or not they could rent out those homes or lease those homes. That is just how they're legally separated, how they'll be laid out. And so we can talk, ask him to describe that process. You mentioned screening, but I don't think I understood what you mean. What'd you mean by that?
Um, it was, I think it's like a, a science screening, and it says it's required for all sides. I think it's something in Oklahoma City's code that they have to do with the screening process.
So screening is like fencing.
Okay.
So what fencing is required.
Okay.
So that's, that's what.
I like the one in 1842, because 1842 totally blocks off our neighborhood from that. They have no access, ne, in no way. It's kinda like they have their own section, we have our own section. And as, we still can go out and, and enjoy the restaurants or whatever, but everything else is just totally blocked off, and they don't have no access to our streets or anything. And it's a, I'm guessing it's a big brick wall that they have on 1842. I would have to look at it and see.
No, 1842 doesn't require a brick wall.
It doesn't require.
But I'll ask him to come up and straighten that out, though. We'll make sure he comes up and explains it, but it doesn't require a brick wall.
But it does have some kind of.
It has screening between the two, between the existing development and, um, and this proposed new development, but that's just a fence.
Okay, so do you have any other questions for me?
I do, um, if you're okay with it. If we leave the current zoning in place, and I understand that you live off 59th, right?
I'm right, uh, within the 300 feet, the legal 300 feet.
Okay, so if we leave the existing, if we leave 1842 in place, do you know that they can build within 15 feet of your lot versus 50? And you're still okay with that?
Well, because the apartments, I mean, we're looking at 500 and, and, what would I say, 592? I mean, that's a lot. And the other one, it's only 522. It's a 12, even if they take some off, it's still an increase of 12%, though. You see what I'm saying? It's 62 extra units from the other pod, so.
So, well, I'm just, I'm asking about the impact on you
Yeah.
of 15 feet versus 50.
Sometime you got to go with the lesser, you know, of evils.
So you'd rather be closer in exchange, because the, the current zoning allows 522 apartment units. The new one says is 545. That's their proposal is 545.
But that still includes the houses, so it's still, it's still higher, because the, on the pod, uh, 1842, they only add eight more houses and stuff, so it all comes up to only 530 for the whole thing.
Okay, well, I'll ask him to straighten out. You're talking about, I think we're confused. I'm trying, I'm trying to be precise about apartment units, 'cause I think that there's where the, there's the most concern, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken.
Mm-hmm, on the, um, on the 842, it's only 522.
22.
But on the other one, it's still lower than what he's proposing.
Yeah, they're saying they wanna do 545 instead of 522. But build it further away from you, but you'd rather have, in exchange, you'd rather just have, see fewer, 20 fewer units.
We have to, we have to go with the, with the lesser, you know, with the lesser evil.
Even though it'll be closer to you.
It's gonna be closer, I understand that, but there's nothing we can do about it. I would rather go with, um, well, I mean, I wanna discuss 2016 more. I think we need more time, 'cause we're just, a lot of our neighbors are just finding out about it. I've been spreading the word, and I also have a, um, uh, a, a.
Petition?
Petition, mm-hmm, with a lot of my, uh, neighbor's signatures about they didn't know and they want more time to look at this PUD.
Well, we can talk about that, too. Whenever we get here back from all the neighbors, we'll let him talk about that as well. Last question. You heard me ask him this question about, because I know there's, there's an idea that we want businesses in this area. And did you hear my, me ask him about that directly, and his response was their goal is to build apartments?
Yeah, and I like businesses.
So what we could do is we could allow the, what is the uses that are allowed in 1842, we could let them have those uses in this new PUD, but they're telling us right now that they don't intend to use those business uses. So we could let them keep them, but they're saying that's not what they intend to do anyway.
It's fine, I mean, I want 1842 because I do like the businesses. We do need restaurants in our area, and it does have restaurants on there, theirs don't.
And we could allow, but what I'm saying, you're understanding what I'm saying is, we could say, okay, we can allow them to have those uses, they don't intend to use them, but we could allow them to have those uses so they'd be, yeah. So they would have that possibility.
2016, we can add it into that, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
So what, 1842, it already has it in there. So if they do 1842, they do have to do businesses, right?
No, no, it just means they have the ability to.
They have the ability to.
Yeah, but their intention is not to do that.
Okay. So, but I like businesses, and I think businesses will be good for the neighborhood and the, uh, the economy, you know? So just having apartments would not be. I think that we need more restaurants, and we would like to have services over there, too. You know what I'm saying? We would like to have vet services, medical services, and everything in that area. So if it lets it on 1842, we definitely want it on 2016, too.
Well, we can discuss that with them, too.
And that's why I'm saying we need a lot more time. We just cannot just make our mind up and let this go through without having some more discussion.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll talk to him about that as well.
Okay, is there anything else?
Thank you. Oh, you all have questions?
All right, uh, last call for Dr. Courtney Gray.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here, um, to advocate for retention of PUD 1842. I'm not in favor of PUD 2016, and I have a myriad of reasons why. Prime, one of my primary reasons is that 18, is that 2016 will directly introduce, it will have a significant traffic impact on the neighborhood of Wildwood Hills and Heights. So if you see here on the drawing, track one, and it's 44 lots, introduces in two different points, uh, significant traffic into our otherwise quiet, stable, longstanding neighborhood. And I'm concerned that with this introduction of traffic, um, that it could cause a myriad of problems. There are children playing on the streets, um, a lot of elderly people live in this area. There's a nice lady who's 100 years old, who lives by herself on 59th. All the neighbors that I have talked to would prefer not to have traffic be directly introduced into the neighborhood. On the other hand, 1842 allows traffic, so the only traffic access to this new development is on the I-44 service road. So 2016 introduces traffic directly onto Wildwood Drive, directly into our nice, quiet neighborhood. But 1842, the only access with 1842, that's already been approved in 2021, is on the I-44 service road. Now, there have been, it's not quite that simple. When the cars go on the I-44 service road, they will have a choice to go left or right. To the north will take them to 63rd, and if they go right, which is westward, they would have the option to, they would pass Braniff Drive or have the option to go on Santa Fe Drive. But I'm in discussions now with our councilwoman, Nikki Nice. I am interested in the possibility of Braniff Drive being converted into, um, having a redesign of the intersection so that, um, we won't have traffic impact on Braniff or on Wildwood Drive, so. Traffic is number one. We don't, neighbors that I've talked to don't want traffic introduced directly, um, on Wildwood Drive. We prefer traffic to come on the I-44 service road. Let's see, what else do I wanna talk about? Density, um, density. The older PUD that's already approved, 522 apartments, eight houses, for a total of 530 units. Conversely, the new PUD is 545 apartments and 47 houses, for a total of 592. So the older PUD, eight houses, no traffic directly accessing our neighborhood, instead on the I-44 service road. The new PUD, instead of eight houses, 47 houses, that have two points of direct access into our quiet neighborhood. So, um, population density, uh, traffic density, those are concerns. Let's see, what else? As you guys were discussing, the uses. With PUD 1842, it allows for civic use, like community recreation, commercial and office use, administrative and professional offices, animal grooming, a vet, business support services, childcare centers, eating establishments. And the eating establishments wonderfully would be restricted to fast casual eateries with no drive-through. And we're in a food desert in northeast Oklahoma City. It would be so great for neighbors to be able to go a short distance to have, to take their pets to the vet, to take their pets to the vet, to take their animals to get groomed. There'd be job opportunities potentially with the businesses. Sit-down restaurants would be allowed, food and beverage retail. That would be great in the food desert in which we reside to have these things. And also, you bring in job opportunities, potentially, businesses, um, tax revenue for our schools. I think 1842 is pro-business. We're a pro-business community. I think 2016, it's not just what I think, it allows for no business. Now, I heard you just mention with the last neighbor that they, that there's no plan with 2016 to, there's no plan, I'm sorry, thank you, with 1842, to utilize the available business option. Well, firstly, this development has changed hands so many times. Multiple developer, it's been sold multiple times, is my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, since 2021, I mean, there've been different developers, and I don't even know if this development is gonna even happen, you know? It could be that, just like the last three or four developers, that, that, um, the Corridor LLC group could decide to sell it next week. This has been, that's why things keep changing, because my understanding is that multiple developers in the last few years have started on an idea, decided that they didn't wanna do it, and then they sell it to a new developer. So we were, our neighborhood was, um, you know, we, we like this business-friendly idea, and we don't know that this developer will even be able to finish it. I haven't been told anything about any numbers. I don't know how much money this developer has to complete the project. I haven't, um, my understanding is that some of his development partners dropped off. I don't, I haven't heard how much this development is, the value and the plan is for this development in terms of money numbers. I'm not aware, no numbers have been, no money numbers have been discussed at, at the meetings as far as I'm aware of. And, uh, I'm not aware of any previous projects that this developer has done, certainly not of this magnitude, so I don't have total confidence that this will be finished. Johnson and Associates, the design firm.
30 seconds remaining.
Did 1842 for another developer. It keeps changing hands, so I don't have certainty that this developer will finish. So I'd rather 1842 be in place. So if this developer sells the property, just like the last few did, then the opportunity and the possibility may be there for businesses, so we can have restaurants in our neighborhood, so we can have vet services in our neighborhood, so we can have businesses in our neighborhood. I'd like to keep that possibility open, 1842 style. I don't want that possibility 2016 style. 2016 brings traffic directly onto Wildwood Drive.
Ms. Gray, your time is up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I, Dr. Gray, can I ask you a question? Um, first, thank you for being here.
Thank you for serving.
Of course, of course, I, I share your concern for our kids. You heard me, my own kids are gonna play in this neighborhood. They're gonna be walking down Wildwood Drive, so I'm with you.
Elderly, too.
And the elderly as well, to share that concern. And I know Councilwoman Nice shares that concern, too, 'cause we talked about it. So I know that that's actively a part of, of the decision-making that's going on here. So first, let me ask about the commercial uses. You heard me share with Ms. Hooks that we can always allow them to retain the commercial uses from 1842 onto 2016.
Commercial uses on 2016? 2016 plus commercial use is very different from 20, from commercial use in 1842. Let me give you a specific example. In 2016, there are no sign regulations. Any sign that is fine, that's under the city ordinance could be allowed. It's, 2016 is very developer-friendly, giving them a ton of leeway. 1842 has specifics, it's more neighbor-friendly. It says that, um, that freestanding signs have to be a maximum of eight feet high and 100 square feet. 1842 says no pole signs are allowed. 1842 says no electronic messaging display signs. Listen, in 2028, we've got an Olympic event coming down the street at the Softball Hall of Fame. We don't want just any unregulated business, uh, area allowed. We want more specific design to ensure that it's gonna look good. 1842 has very specific things, as I just stated, specific sign regulations. 2016, no sign regulations. The Olympics are gonna be down the street soon. We want this to look good. We have an opportunity in Oklahoma to host an Olympic event for Los Angeles, California, down the street from our neighborhood. We want it to look as good as possible. 2016 is, has very little regulation. 1842, more specific regulations regarding the signage, as one example of how the businesses would potentially look better with 1842, and put out any sign you want, put any just flapper cloth sign, you know, that you see at some convenience stores, that kinda arc over. So we want specifics, and 1842 has these specific sign regulations. 2016 has no sign regulations. I think 1842 is a much better plan.
Okay, well, Dr. Gray, I appreciate that, and I share your concern about signage. But I, and I know you share my commitment to making sure that all of our neighbors are clear about what the truth is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the truth of the matter is that prior to the, of the approval of the sign code was when we did 1842. So there are certain requirements that are in 1842 that now may be enshrined in the city ordinances. So some of those specifics may not have been put in 2016, because they're now in the law and required of the law. So I'm gonna ask our planning staff, after the conclusion of listening to all of our neighbors, explain what those sign regulations are, but to say that there's no sign regulations of 2016, it's passed, is not true.
I read PUD 1842
Yes, ma'am.
On my left side yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
Line by line, precept on precept. I read, I read 2016 right next to it, I had them side by side. 2016, if you want, I can find exactly what section it's in, nine point something. It said no sign regulations, except, uh, within city ordinance.
Exactly, so.
And so it didn't mention the specific of the ordinance.
But the ordinances have changed. And we'll have staff. And we'll have staff explain what that means and what the specific impact is if 2016 is passed, because I want us to all be clear about the information. So, I understand that, so I just-
I'm unaware of, I'm unaware of any recent city ordinance signage change. I'm not aware of that. I just went by the PUD. But it has a general feel for 1842 having a more specific plan to protect the residents and 2016 having a less specific plan to protect the development firm and give them a leeway to do whatever they want to do with our neighborhood.
Okay, well, I, we will, let's hear the facts from staff. They'll stand up and give us the facts. And if need be, we can just allow them to retain the same requirements from 1842, if that's where the planning commission is going.
Mr. Pennington-
Make them keep the same requirements.
I'm confused. As a public servant, it seems to me like you should be on the side, that you should be interested in protecting residents in a neighborhood. And it sounds like I think you have family in the neighborhood. So, you haven't commented about traffic being introduced onto Wildwood Drive.
I have lots of comments about traffic being-
Okay, I, I was late. I was late.
Yeah, and I have lots of comments about traffic on Wildwood Drive.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna, I want to ask the developer to defend what their proposal is-
Okay.
...about traffic on Wildwood Drive.
1842 has everyone going to I-44 Service Road. 2016 allows people to come onto Wildwood Drive, a large influx of people. I haven't counted the number of homes, but a big number of people compared to the number, i- it's, it's gonna be a big difference. So, it concerns me. You're, you're running for office, you're a public servant now. Why you haven't spoken up about traffic being entered in our neighborhood, so that I know, I just hear you trying to protect the developer, but are you trying to protect people in our neighborhood?
I am absolutely trying to protect-
How so? How so regarding traffic on Wildwood Drive?
But I'm absolutely trying to protect people in our neighborhood.
Ow!
And I think, and that's why I'm trying to make sure that I understand what your concerns are, Dr. Gray.
My biggest concern is traffic.
Dr. Gray-
Mm-hmm.
-you've had your time.
Okay.
Please sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Do you want to hear from staff on signage? Yeah, I'd love to hear about the sign code, but I do want to be very clear. My questions are about making sure that we understand what's being proposed and what the existing law is, because it's important for me that our neighbors know the truth about the difference between the two. So, that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking to all of our neighbors. I want to be clear. What are they saying they want to do? What are they currently allowed to do? How do we make sure that we accurately understand that information? That is the whole point of the line of questioning that I'm making. So, that's why I'm asking that, to make sure we're clear about where we are, where they're proposing we're trying to go, so that way we can decide.
So, Sarah can backcheck me. One of the reasons 1842 had vastly different sign language was a multitude of reasons, but there wasn't a new sign code and it had commercial uses. And with a commercial base zoning, you're allowed significantly more signage, which is why a lot of those restrictions got put in place. Under this PUD with an R4 base zoning, under the new code, I believe it to be a 12-foot sign and 100 square foot max along the interstate. So, if signage is that big of a concern, we're happy to agree to the eight-foot from what the code allows at 12. But we weren't allowed EMD signs, billboards, larger square footages, because our base zoning of this PUD is different than that of 1842.
So, again, you can't build EMD signs on eight, in 2016, nor can you, we know you can't do it in 1842.
Correct. The new code doesn't allow that for the R4 base zoning district.
Sarah, go ahead.
No, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I was just gonna say that when the previous PUD came through, it was before the new sign code was adopted, and so we regularly, regularly were using PUDs and S-PUDs to shorten and reduce the size of commercial signs. I don't think the R4 standards changed too, too much, but just for anyone in the audience, the new sign code, it was adopted in February of 2024 and became effective March 15th. And I do have a copy of it here for anyone who wants to take a look at it. But he's right, with a, with a base R4 development, the maximum size, if you have more than 30 units, it's calculated at one square foot per two linear foot, feet of frontage. And then it is a maximum of 100 square feet for ground signs, 90 square feet for pole sign, and you can, you know, attached, if I'm reading it correctly.
Right. And with the pole sign, I don't think I've ever seen a 12-foot tall pole sign, right? You typically see a monument sign. One last thing on the signage, because I just want to clarify for anyone that was confused. 9.10 of the PUD, it says, "The signage shall be per the City of Oklahoma City sign ordinance." It doesn't say there are no regulations and reference it. It specifically says it is per the ordinance. And I'm no zoning expert on the sign code, it was just adopted, but I believe that would mean it's in full, in a full effect on this PUD.
So, one, one more thing for our residents. Our staff's preference, when we are now doing PUDs and S-PUDs, is that the statement is just that the signs will meet the sign code, because a PUD and S-PUD cannot be used to get more signage or a less restrictive signage than the new sign code would allow. So, we're, we're trying to be extra careful. There's honestly been a couple times I almost gave people more signs by accident, because I'm used to recommending signs. And in that particular instance, they wouldn't have been able to have what the new sign code allows. So, our preference to make sure we are not allowing bigger, taller, or more signage than the sign code is just to meet our current sign code. But I do, for anyone who wants, I, I do have a copy of it, if you'd like to read it. I'll, I'll take it out to the lobby.
And I think that'd be helpful, Sarah, but it's also important to remember that sometimes when I get more information from neighbors about what they like about what the existing zoning allows, then we can make a direct comparison to what the current ordinances say, so that we can square the two and meet their need. And so, that's why I'm asking questions about what things that residents are concerned about or want to know about or prefer about 1842 for signage, so we can make sure we understand that and there's clarity about what the future may mean or whether it's better to stay where we are. So, that's, that's just the point. But thank you for making that clarification.
I, you know, I would say about that, Sarah, I mean, I, I totally understand that logic, and I think that's probably a very good idea, but for our purposes, our information, it might be helpful to have, you know, what that would be also indicated, just so that we don't have to go back and forth and try to decipher it ourselves.
And you can be, you can be more restrictive in your PUDs, but just not less, but.
Okay, we have one more citizen signed up to speak. Please give us your name and address, we have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Ashley Wilman. I'm a resident, along with my husband, at 334 Northeast 59th Street. Our property backs up directly to Track 2, and so lots of relevant status or situation for us to comment on. First, I want to express my appreciation to the neighbors who have been advocates for this project and for our, having a voice in this project from the beginning. I appreciate all of their comments. I appreciate the planning committee and certainly Mr. Pennington for his work on behalf of the residents and his advocacy and patience in explaining and making sure that we all understand. So, like many of my fellow residents, I agree that there has been insufficient time for us to fully understand the project at hand, the differences between 1842 and 2016. I think that it probably makes sense for us to have some additional meetings and discussion in order to make sure that everyone's on the same page. That said, I differ from many of those who have spoken up today and that I am a firm advocate for 2016 as opposed to 1842. I think that it addresses a lot of the concerns that some of my, my fellow neighbors have raised. In particular, I think that it provides for better, a better traffic situation. There are, as, as Mr. Pennington has pointed out, some things that we just cannot change. And so, given that those things cannot be changed, I think that 2016 offers a much better traffic situation, not to mention the fact that, it sounds like the, the commercial situation is off the table for the most part. However, I would just reiterate to my fellow residents that having commercial properties in that area only brings people in who don't have an investment in the neighborhood. So, I would much rather have additional single-family homes and additional people who live there and who are invested in the neighborhood and invested in the community than people who are just coming in and out of the situation. I think that there will be less disruption if we don't have the ability even to have commercial properties on the, and mixed-use property usage. I also think that, you know, they raise some really good concerns in the apartment count between 522 and 545. However, I think that we all agree that there's gotta be a little bit of give and take. And what I would like to give is an additional, I think it's 62 units, overwhelmingly single-family homes, which I think as residents, we all agree are preferable to multi-unit housing. And in exchange, what we are getting is lower apartment height restriction or a better, better situation when it comes to height restrictions. Also, I, I couldn't disagree more with, as much as I love our, my, my neighbor who is okay with the 15-foot buffer as opposed to the 50-foot. My, my house is, is the one that I think was used to identify the view situation. We have the highest point, I think, in the, on the street on 59th. And having that 60-foot buffer is incredibly important as opposed to having just 15 feet from the back of my yard. I mean, all I would see when I look out my house and I have a balcony would be apartments and somebody's living room and a shower or a bathroom or something like that. So, 2016 provides a much better space for us to still have the tranquil environment that we all want in our neighborhood. And I, it also sounds like there is a better, there are more specifications in 2016 for traffic calming devices and signage that would help diffuse the traffic situation that we know is inevitable, because it's already been passed and because it's under state jurisdiction and not the jurisdiction of the planning committee. So, overall, I think that 2016 is a vastly superior option. However, I join my neighbors in saying that there is an opportunity for greater understanding and discussion, so that there can, can be some clarity about some of these issues. I was only made aware, my husband and I were only made aware of the situation about a month ago, so we're still new to this, the situation. I know several people have been involved for a long time and invested in this discussion and invested in what's happening here. But I think that the 2016 provides a much better situation for the resident, the current residents. And like I said, the, the, we're gonna have apartments there anyway, we're gonna have developments there anyway. It's just a matter of what is gonna be better for the residents, and I think that the better option is 2016. That said, again, I think a deferral so that there's more time for clarification and people can really understand what they're getting into is the optimal route at this point.
Any questions for Ms. Wilman? Okay, thank you. I did get one additional request.
Brenda Cruthers, 57, 16 Braniff Drive. And I'm gonna make it as quick as I can. I listened to the meeting where Tim Johnson requested approval of the current PUD 1842. It was dated August 26, 2021. He was asked the question, "How many apartment units are gonna be there?" Let me ask it differently. How many apartment units could there be? Tim Johnson answered, "350." But we kept the density on the site at 12 units per acre. I have been trying to ask about the significance of that paragraph since June 7th, when I submitted the pictures that you keep seeing up there. We have had a lot of misinformation, because we're told that the current PUD, the number is 522. That does not go with what Tim Johnson told you all. And when you voted, one person voted against it, because that person said, "With that many people," and he's talking about 350 units, "it's gonna be a catastrophe with the traffic." Now, we're talking about, oh, and another thing that was said, "Oh, this doesn't have as many units as Lincoln." Well, guess what? With the 560 that PUD 2016 is saying, according to the PUD for the Lincoln at Central Park, they have 536. So, you know, we really getting up there, and that's a lot. But I think the only reason I want, and I want to thank you for reducing the height, because I was gonna discuss that, because I listened to that meeting and you all talked about 45 feet and a patio and people throwing drinks off of a patio. Okay, I live below these things, and folks are gonna be 70 feet high, but the gentleman just said, "We're gonna keep it at 45." That meant a lot to me. So, what I'm just saying about the density, we don't even really know what the, what the real number is. I challenge them that the real number is 350 in the current PUD. If somebody, you know, straightened it out for me. And then, could I do my pictures just 'cause you have them?
Yes.
This is just showing the drainage and the runoff that we already have on Braniff and Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was doing it. Okay, here it go. This is what I want you to see. That top picture was dated August of 2020. We had just a line of trees in front, looking out our front door. The bottom picture is dated June 2023. That's what the Department of Transportation, I know that's not y'all, that's what they did to us. To me, that is almost like raping. It wasn't called for, that many trees. The point that I'm trying to make, and the next picture, please, there's another picture of trees. Okay, that's again where we flood, because we have the drainage. And go ahead, one more picture. See if it's another picture. Okay, this picture at the bottom is showing the trees in the back of the house. My question is, will the back look like the front looks now? We are Wildwood. Can we keep some of our trees? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruthers. All right, that's all I have signed up to speak, so that'll conclude our public comment.
So, I'll happily walk through some of the additional questions. I think we talked about the sign ordinance already. Clarification on the screening, it was mentioned that screening is not required in PUD 2016. It is. What it says is screening is not required for Track 1, which is the single-family portion. We have screening required for Track 2, which is the multifamily piece, and that's in the amended TEs that you have.
But Mark, let's clarify that.
Yes.
What you're, what you're saying by that is, so Track B, excuse me, Track 2, it'd be screening from the existing neighborhood. You don't want Track 1 to have screening from the existing neighborhood, because it would look like there'd be a fence between those single-family homes and the existing single-family homes. That was why I was trying to clarify what the definition was of the screening and the requirement, so we all knew what that meant.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a lot of mention of what the last PUD in terms of the unit count. I, when going back and reviewing it, I believe the intent of what was stated at the, at the meeting was the proposed project had around 350 units. There was also a significant amount of townhomes and other single-family lots in the PUD, which Tim stated at that meeting, was 12 units an acre across the site. And so, I want to address the vote that was against it, that was noted as a catastrophe. That was Commissioner Cravens voting in protest that this PUD did not tie into the public streets to the north. And that was at the request of the neighborhood, which we've continued to attempt to satisfy by not tying the multifamily. And so, that vote was not because there were too many apartments. That vote was because we were not making connections to the three stub streets that exist going into this property. When Wildwood was originally developed, it would appear that it was always intended to connect onto this property. We are doing so because the residents have requested adamantly that we not tie in. Plating is required. It is noted in this PUD, so we have to go through the preliminary plat and the final plat stage for the single-family portion, and the plating is what allows them to legally be sold individually. And the plating is what allows them to legally be sold individually. So I'll note, our developer does not have an issue with adding the commercial uses in. Personally, in looking out for the neighbors, I would recommend against that. Yes, it gives our clients more flexibility for development. But if somebody seeks commercial, they would be much better off with a new application and new restrictions, wall pack lighting, everything else that we have, that we see every other Thursday for conflicts between commercial and residential. But if it's the will of the commission to add them, we're happy to do so. I think that opens up a larger issue than it potentially solves. And then I'll, I'll close unless there are questions with, it's been stated multiple times correctly that we are seeking 62 additional homes, whether that's the portion of apartment homes or the single-family homes. Believe this client and this developer has done a significant amount of negotiating in exchange for those units in trying to appease the neighborhood. And I, I think what you can see through some of the discussion is, in agreeing to certain things, it, it pulls away from things that the other portion of the neighborhood want. So flipping the single-family homes and adding the two drives, while that's a win for some, it appears to be a loss for others. So we've done everything we can in an attempt to address all of the concerns, including the developer paying for traffic calming in the neighborhood. So happy to answer any questions. I know it's been requested for a deferral. I'm happy to continue meeting between now and council. I don't know what more we can do. We've had four neighborhood meetings where we've stressed over and over again the facts of this PUD and the facts of the previous PUD. And whether it's willfully ignoring it or not understanding it, we have laid it out in emails and in presentations. I don't know what a deferral today does to clarify any more of what we've already done. So I, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted, I was going to ask you, but I've gone back, it's here in the notes. This item was deferred from June 13th. That means your application was made roughly May. So, and that's when notice would have gone out. So deferred from June 13th, July 25th, and August 22nd. So when I hear more time, I mean, I think, I think they've had a lot of time. So, but obviously that's up to the applicant.
Well, I think, you know, you all know the challenges that we, we hear about regularly, about notice and the sufficiency of the notice. And, and, you know, this commission is very familiar with, with me following Commissioner Powers and always believing in the power of community and collaboration and us coming together. But I do have a few more questions for, for Mark about this development. One of the comments has been made that there are, a concern is about the traffic on Wildwood Drive. Why not have no access from Track 1 to Wildwood Drive and just allow them to have entry from the same entrance as, as Track 2?
We need two access points for the single-family homes to meet fire code. Under the original design, we had one going out to Wildwood and the emergency access, which I think a lot, many of the neighbors, I'm not going to say majority, that mentioned it, did not want that emergency drive. In order to still satisfy the fire code and the subregs, we had to add the two. So if we sever that, we cannot construct single-family homes in that portion of the project without that tie-in to Wildwood. We could put townhomes there or we can put apartments because they're sprinkled and the regulations change from the fire code. But for single-family, we have to make a connection of some way out to Wildwood.
Okay, so help me make that make sense. So if I, if we add a TE today and say, you can't have access to Wildwood Drive, period, for single-family, for the multifamily in Track 2, explain to us what that means, what you would do. Because I don't, I think the neighbors are entitled to know exactly the impact, which is exactly what I've been trying to get to. Let's have factual conversations about what is going to happen with each step of this. So if we don't, if I ask the planning commission to not allow access on Wildwood Drive, tell me what that means.
Likely what it will mean is we take a deferral, redesign it, change the tracks, and that or go back to the original PUD where we could put townhomes and multifamily up in that area. We would be capped at 30 single-family homes with a one very long straight street going up to them. So not allowing the connection to Wildwood likely means a longer deferral because we're going to redesign this under the existing PUD or come back to you with townhomes or a product that's sprinkled. It's inefficient and not cost-effective to sprinkle single-family homes. It's, I think right now it's $2.50 a square foot for a single-family home. And that comes with maintenance issues in perpetuity for that homeowner.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take the time to ask staff about traffic impact and their analysis. Then let's talk about the unit count, because I know that that is something that's very important, is the unit count. So explain how the unit, how you arrived at the conclusion for the unit count for 1842.
Sure. So 1842 is broken into two tracks. Unfortunately, it was A and B and not 1 and 2, so bear with me. That PUD, Track A, was the single-family homes that front Wildwood. There were eight of them. Track B was the balance of the property, so the lion's share of the roughly 45 acres. The PUD had one regulation in there regarding density, and it said 12 units per acre for Track B. So when you take the roughly 45 acres, multiply it out over the 12 units an acre, you arrive at approximately 522 units.
Ms. Carruthers, I'm sorry, you've had your, you've had your time. No, please sit down, please sit down. We're not doing this. No, no, you've had your time. You've had your time.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking about. And he's answering the question, and I disagree, and I'd like to say something about.
No, we're not, this is not a debate.
Track B is 30 acres. Track A is 45.
Please sit down.
That's 45.
I, I'll happily address that. Track B in this PUD, or which is Track 2, in this PUD is likely about 30 acres. So when we're talking, so what's happening is we're conflating two PUDs and two tracks and acreages. So under the existing PUD, Track B was 43 and change. In this PUD, Track 2, where the multifamily is, is approximately 30 acres. So I'm not stating that 522 units are permitted in Track 2 of this PUD. It encapsulates the additional Track 1 area. We've completely reconfigured how the density is calculated and the tracks, and I think that's where confusion is coming in. We can only look at 1842 and the boundaries of those tracks to calculate the density allowed in that PUD.
So I think where there's confusion is that Track A and Track B don't perfectly align with what Track 1 and Track 2 are. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Because I'm certain that Ms. Carruthers has done her math correctly. So I'm wanting to make sure that we are clear about what that, what that means.
Correct. So this is the site plan from 1842. The single-family home portion tract was only the eight lots along Wildwood Drive. The balance of the property was Track B, which was 12 units an acre. So Track B also included the piece that we have 44 single-family homes shown now.
So Track B, excuse me, yes, Track B, sorry, in 1842 is larger than Track 2?
Yes, by roughly 14, 15 acres.
Okay, so that's impacting the, the calculation. Okay, and then let's talk about the impact, because obviously the, the pictures that were shown in the previous slides are very impactful. Clearly, Braniff Drive and all of the construction that's happening along the service road is very disruptive. It clearly has some, some flooding issues. It clearly has some, some other issues with, with preserving the trees and preserving the character of the neighborhood. I want you to explain how, if we approve this 2016, how this makes any difference? Because we want to protect the neighbors, we want to protect their drainage, we want to protect the trees. So I want to know, am I, I want to know from you how this PUD improves on that situation versus 1842, if at all?
Absolutely. So I wholeheartedly understand the frustration that they experienced with the Department of Transportation. They went from seeing trees to seeing overpasses. What our PUD has is the 15-foot required landscape buffer and then the 50-foot no-build area. And the language actually says, if trees are removed, they have to be replaced with evergreen plantings to fulfill the screening requirement. So a developer is not going to want to clear the trees to then have to go pay to reinstall evergreen trees. But there are places in that area that trees don't exist that we are committing to replanting to fully complete the landscape screening along, you could see the, the green areas that are, that are outlined along Braniff and the back of 59th Street. So we've been, because we heard those concerns, we were, we had the best intent to put in there the proper language to replant and preserve the trees that are adjacent to the neighborhood in those areas.
So 1842 doesn't require you to do that? Because I thought it did require some level of separation between those houses that are right there. You can see it in the lower left-hand corner of everyone's screen, those homes connecting Braniff to the service road. Tell me about what 1842 allows versus what 2016 allows.
It was the 15-foot landscape buffer. What we've done in addition is add specific language saying we will replant and fill in the gaps. And then further, we have the 50-foot no-build area. So what PUD 1842 would have allowed is a parking lot or a building much closer.
Okay, so let's talk about the height, because I think the height is a very important thing. And I know that it is also important for our neighbors who might have to look back. And I try to imagine and envision that my house is on 59th Street and that my backyard overlooks this. That's how I like to look at all of these cases. I like to look at it from the perspective of if it was me, what would that mean for me? So help me understand what this difference of going from a 70-foot maximum in 1842 versus a 45-foot maximum in 2016, help me understand what that means.
Right, so a, as was mentioned, this is a challenging property in that it was the borrow pit for the Belle Isle Station development. So there is significant dirt that has been taken from this property and relocated elsewhere in the city. Because of that, there's about 70 feet of fall indifference from some of the homes on 59th to the furthest southeastern portion of our project. So just in talking about 59th, because the topography changes across the site, removing the 70-foot, which was allowed, I think, within 200 feet of that, that northern line, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say eliminates, but it significantly decreases the chance that from their backyard, they are going to see windows of any floor. Because we would have had five stories versus what we now are only permitted would be three under 45 feet. So it is less impactful, I think, generally to the neighborhood overall. But the developers willing, in exchange, again, for these 62 units, was removing two additional floors of the building.
Okay, so it would be, it would be smaller, I get that. And I think that the, the concern, let's go back to the commercial uses, because I, I know that that's something that's very important to our neighbors. We all want to see more restaurants, we all want to see more retail in Northeast OKC. I know that that is true, and I share in wanting that in my own immediate area and obviously in this one. So explain to me why there wouldn't be, why wouldn't the developer want to put in more commercial uses into this space? Why wouldn't that be something that's viable when we know that there aren't enough of them in this area?
Sure, so, I mean, generally rooftops drive commercial development. While there's, you know, a number of homes in the Wildwood neighborhood, a lot of this portion of the city and along the I-40 service road is still undeveloped. So I think there's a market reality, as well as the on-ramp and off-ramp do not put you in front of this property. It puts you half a mile north up at 63rd, which then you're backtracking. So I think there are other more desirable, developable properties for commercial at this time. But then the reality is the current owner is a multifamily developer. You know, when we look at developers, there are few developers that float back and forth between commercial and residential because the product and the, the economics of it are vastly different. I, I think that's one of the bigger reasons, but as of right now, there is not a demand for commercial property. As was mentioned, this property has changed hands several times. It's been for sale and no fast food user, fast casual user, big box user has sought this property and purchased it to develop anything there.
Okay, well, I, I know that there's demand because we have one. So whether it's sufficient enough to, to make people make that investment, we know that that's something that we want. I think the challenge, commissioners, because I empathize with Wildwood Drive and there being single-family homes now being pla, recommended to be placed there. And so I think it's a challenge to think through that there would be more traffic on Wildwood Drive. So I'd love to hear from city staff and about the impact of, and maybe you might explain to neighbors the analysis that's used in when reaching a, excuse me, a conclusion about Wildwood Drive and how it's impacted traffic-wise. Because we care about protecting our kids, our seniors. Again, my own kids are going to be on the street in Wildwood, on Wildwood Drive.
Sure, I, I think that was directed at staff, I'm happy to share the developer's perspective.
So, yeah, so traffic on Wildwood Drive is a, it's a local, it's a local street. In terms of the level of traffic, it's, it's got very low traffic because it doesn't, it's not a connector street. It doesn't connect any, any, you know, it just, it goes into the neighborhood and terminates there. And it serves a little bit of, some, some side streets in the neighborhood. The number of homes that are being put onto Wildwood Drive, I think it was 40, 44, are, while that's a significant number, it's not significant enough to have a major increase in traffic on Wildwood Drive. So that's why, you know, we, we didn't have concern about that in our staff report. If it were a, a much larger subdivision or if, you know, if it connected to the south, then of course you'd see a, a major increase in traffic. But since there is no connection from Wildwood Drive southward into the multifamily area, that's really not going to impact Wildwood Drive.
Okay, I think that there, there is still some, there is still some confusion. And perhaps it would be beneficial for us to spend some more time visiting with neighbors about exactly what the impact is. But here's the thing that I, that worries me, and I'd like to hear from commissioners as well. But here are the things that worry me. The benefits that I see of going with 2016, and it's very clear that our neighbors know this, we'd go from 70 feet maximum height to 45. We'd go from a 15-foot buffer from the people from, on 59th to 50. Yes, we'd have some more neighbors who'd be single-family homeowners, but you're talking about providing more opportunities for my family, for your families, to live in single-family homes that have the same character as yours in our neighborhood. The other thing is, we cannot, no matter what we do, we can say no to this, we can keep 1842 in place, we can't stop the state from accessing Braniff Drive. We cannot stop them from doing that. I hope that maybe one day we can look at making it a cul-de-sac if those options are open. I am right there with you on how we can make that happen. You can count me in as one of the people who will sign the petition or do whatever it takes to try to get to that conclusion. But since at this point we cannot, if we vote yes for this, they're going to be required, they've agreed to put up the signage so that people will go to Santa Fe instead of Braniff. They've agreed that they're going to put traffic calming devices on Braniff if we approve this. So then if people decide to go down Braniff, they're going to be facing the traffic calming devices, and guess what they'll do? They'll go down Santa Fe because they know that if they go down Braniff, you're going to have those, those speed bumps or other traffic calming devices to slow the traffic down. So it's a very hard, I'm sitting in this chair and it is a difficult choice. I want to respect our neighbors, I care. I think most of you know that I've been on the phone with you, I've talked to you, I've been to meetings with you because I care. I care personally because it's my family, my family's investment in this area, my children being raised in this neighborhood. But at the same time, I keep looking and going, a lot of the concessions they've made are things that make our neighborhood better. Protecting our neighbors on 59th with a bigger buffer, ensuring that we're protecting the traffic that's on Braniff, ensuring that the height of these buildings is significantly lower so that the people who look out on 59th aren't looking in somebody's apartment but are instead looking at a rooftop. Those are huge benefits to me. And then as somebody who loves Northeast Oklahoma City, who believes in Northeast Oklahoma City, more single-family homes instead of them thinking that we're relegated to having only apartments in our community? Absolutely not. This is the most beautiful part of Oklahoma City. There should be opportunities for people to have quality, single-family homes in our great neighborhoods in Northeast OKC. So I'm torn, commissioners, because I want to respect our neighbors, I love our neighbors, I've listened to our neighbors. I will continue to do that. But I want to make sure that we're making a good, informed choice.
I would just say about the traffic, it's not just Braniff that they've committed to install traffic calming, it's Wildwood as well. And so I think that anybody who thinks they're going to cut through this neighborhood will be quickly disabused of that notion. There's, there's not any place to go that's convenient. There's, there's not any place to go that's convenient. If you use the frontage and go up Santa Fe, or go on around to 63rd the other way, you're coming to a lighted intersection. Here, you're coming, assuming you can find your way through the neighborhood, and it, it meanders, which is great as a place to live, not great as a place to cut through. But if you do that, and you end up on 63rd Street, you're at a place where there's no, there's no lights, no traffic lights, you're on a hill, you know, you're having to deal with traffic going by. I just don't, I don't think that this configuration will increase the traffic through the neighborhood. And yes, there are 44 new homes. And what I would say about that, there was some comment made about people aging out, that the neighborhood is getting older, and so on and so forth. I really think that the addition of a new, single-family section to this neighborhood will, will, you know, revitalize it. So I, I think that is going to be a good thing for the neighborhood. If I didn't think so, I wouldn't vote in favor of it. You know, I wouldn't want to see anything done, as I said at our last meeting, I think this is a little gem sitting up on the hill, this neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to see anything harm. It, it is unfortunate that the service road connects to Braniff, but you know, with the addition of the traffic calming, maybe the neighborhood, the actual neighbors in the neighborhood will find that useful, depending on where it leads to. I, I'm not in favor of seeing commercial development along this particular stretch of that service road. I, I don't think it would be a good fit for the neighborhood. There'll be plenty, I'm sure, to follow. Those rooftops will, will bring that kind of service to this area, in my view. But the, this connection, the way the on-and-off ramps work and all of that, I, I just don't think it makes sense here.
I, I would second that. I mean, in my opinion, it's an awful location for commercial. You can't, you can't get to it. You can see it from I-44, but you can't get to it. And what would happen, in my opinion, is that you'd have maybe some restaurants, some high-end businesses go in there, and within a year, they wouldn't last. And before long, you know, you'd have probably some undesirable businesses backfill. So.
I agree. And with the, with the way the exits are, if there was a commercial component, what would end up going in there is warehouse-type stuff, which would not benefit the neighborhood.
Yeah. I, I mean, from the last time we heard this case to this time, I think there's been a number of improvements. And no emergency connection, not, no connection, not even an emergency connection between track two and one, I think is a good move. Just clarifying the six-foot capped stained fence screening, track one, 50-foot setbacks, landscape buffers. These are good moves that I, from what I took away from the last meeting, were what were being requested. So I think that, that's good faith. The, I had a slightly different take on the commercial component, and I'm not thinking large-scale macro, you know, strip mall-type stuff, but 522 multifamily units is in itself its own generator of some need for less, I mean, this is a completely car-dependent development, so I would like the developer to at least have the opportunity to consider some type of services to serve the, the residents, at least, in the form of some, you know, a store, a cafe, coffee shop, you know. It seems like a, a little pocket commercial that's really intended to serve the residents that could also be used by the neighborhood would be an actual benefit to the development. But I agree that you're not going to get a, a major, like a national franchise or a larger commercial to, to work there. And I don't think that would be appropriate either. But I'd hate to see them not be able to serve their own residents in a better development by what we pass. I don't, I don't know how that works, but it, you know, so anyway, that's just a thought that, but e, even riding in those uses to the PUD doesn't force them to do it. You know, that's up to them, so.
And if there's no connection between the frontage and the neighborhood, then anybody who wants to do that would have to go out onto 63rd, around Santa Fe, or to Kelly, isn't it? And back down and around. I mean, there's, without a connection, vehicular connection
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From the neighborhood, you know, it, it just doesn't make sense.
Understood. Yeah. I, that, that's why I, I get all that. That's, I just, working on multifamily projects, it's always nice when, if the people living there can go get some essentials without having to get in their car and drive somewhere. But again, that's, that's not something we can really require at this horseshoe. That's all I have.
And I think there's plenty of, there's, there's an actual C3 property along Santa Fe that could be developed, so. And I, I'm in agreement with, with all the commissioners on this piece of property and the land use. The way the two separate tracks are, it, to me, it, it's a, a project that I think in the long run, everyone will enjoy.
All right. Where are we? So I think, I think this, I think we could, we could take two more weeks and talk to neighbors about the value of, about the preference to say, no single-family homes, they'd rather, we've heard the developer say, that their intention's going to be to put townhomes and more multifamily in that section where there's currently single-family homes proposed, which in my view is not desirable. I would not like to see there be more multifamily units in that space that's most, that's next to the most single-family homes. I would sooner like to see more single-family homes next to more single-family homes. And that's what's being proposed. So if we go back and change it, we know we're going to get more apartments, because that's what's already allowed. It's a very, it's just a very difficult thing. I would say, I would say this, if, regardless of whether this commission votes to recommend denial of this application, or recommend approval of this application, it would still have to go to the city council in six weeks for a final decision. I think that more discussion was with the neighbors would, over the course of the six weeks that it would take to go between city, between this planning commission meeting and city council, I am committed, and I'm certain I can get Mark to commit to, some more meetings, and I'm certain Councilwoman Nice would commit to that, to having more community meetings where we can clarify where we are. It is important to me that we cement the gains we've made in these negotiations so far. And those, those gains are significant. The buffers matter. Guaranteed 50-foot buffers for those people that are on Braniff, at that southern end of Braniff, for those people who are on 59th are important. Getting the height limitations limited are important. Getting single-family homes in our community, because we are worthy of having high-quality places to live like the existing neighborhood, continue, I think is important. So these decisions are not easy. I don't take any of them lightly. It is very hard to sit in this seat, as many of you know from having to do it. But we do the best that we can with the information that we have. So I, my recommendation is this, that we plan another community meeting between now and the time that this application goes to city council. And I will vote to cement the gains that we've gained from these negotiations, and that more negotiation continue between now and council.
We're happy to agree to an additional neighborhood meeting. Might check the forecast this time to avoid some hail damage.
That would be nice.
My car, but.
So for clarity from staff, these technical evaluations in that sheet that I've now lost sitting up here, do we need to read them into the record individually to ensure that this is a part of the PUD?
So just discussing that, Sarah, can you answer this question? Currently in the MDS, the document Mark provided, these aren't currently in the MDS right now, right?
Sarah Welch, Plant Department, no, these are not currently in there. So I think what you should do is read at least the section and the topic. So for instance, I think the TE would probably be accepting or revising the master design statement per the changes proposed to the planning commission on September 26th. And then read for us, Section 9.0, reducing the density to 545. TE2, Section 9.2 regarding the landscape buffer. If you just do
Just read them.
Excuse me. If you just do that, then this, what?
We could have read it by now. Now, because, yeah, we're, we're thinking we should probably read them after that.
Okay. Well, I'm, just so you know, we will be, we will be attaching these to the meeting minutes for everyone to see as it moves forward to council.
That does make it easier. Sarah, while you, while you have the mic, let's clarify this question one more time about signage, because that's very important. We want to make sure that there is not unregulated signage if PUD 2016 is approved. So can you tell us, based on the current zoning requirements, what signage is allowed if 2016 were approved?
It would, I can tell you that it would be a maximum of eight feet tall would be the, the sign they could have. So they'd have one sign that's eight, eight feet tall, because it's on a minor connector street.
No pole sign.
No pole sign?
We can have to state that.
If you, let's see.
It'd be one short pole sign.
I understand.
We can do that.
Yeah, you can do that. I'm not sure about that question. I'm looking for that.
Mr. Butler, I believe the service road is a highway, which I think allows it up to 12.
Let's limit it to eight.
For the apartment track. So if, if they want eight, we're fine with eight. I just, I don't want anyone to think we're pulling wool over anyone's eyes.
Yeah, you're right, because there's, I think there's a statement that says if you're next to a highway, then that
Right.
That controls, even though it's not a highway, that
Maybe I am an expert on the zoning.
So again, so there wouldn't be any other signs allowed. There'd be allowed eight, it sounds like 12-foot sign currently on the service road.
They, yes, but if you want, so if you want it to be eight, limited to eight, but, and yes, they, because they have no commercial, all of that in the sign code does not apply. There's no commercial zoning, so they can't have that type of signage.
Okay.
It's much, it's much reduced because it's a residential zone.
Well, I will, I'm committed to work with our neighbors. Let's have some more meetings. Let's talk through this. And I'm committed to helping in the planning and all of that. And, and I am, I know that there are neighbors who are here who might totally disagree with me, and I respect your opinion too. And I am happy to listen to you and visit with you. I'll come, I'll knock on your door and talk to you about your concerns and, and hear about it. But I, I'm trying to do the best that I can with the information that we have. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to city council approval of PUD 2016, including the following technical evaluations. Number one, revise Section 9.0 to reduce density from 560 to 545 dwelling units. TE2, revise Section 9.2. Track two shall have a landscape buffer no less than 15 feet in width, which may consist of existing vegetation on the north and west property lines adjacent to the single-family residential development. Where trees are not existing or preserved, evergreen plantings on 25-foot centers shall be required. TE3, revise, revise Section 9.4. Fence to be six feet in height and include a stain and cap. The area where screening is required is noted on Exhibit B. TE4, add to Section 9.5, lots along Wildwood Drive, should be required to front Wildwood Drive to further incorporate track one into the existing neighborhood. TE5, add to Section 9.6, any proposed detention pond along the west property boundary constructed at a higher elevation than the finished floor of the existing home shall be required to outlet to the south, subject to public works review and approval. Section six, revise Section 9.8. Two proposed streets within track one shall be permitted to meet the subdivision regulations and fire code, and that there be further changes that a property owner association, through the use of recorded covenants restrictions, shall govern maintenance of the proposed detention pond in track one and any common areas in track two. The developer, developer agrees to work with the Wildwood Heights Neighborhood Association to formally amend the Neighborhood Association boundaries to incorporate track one, subject to the approval from the Wildwood Neighborhood Association. At the exits of track two, the developer agrees to place a directional sign requesting residents and visitors to use Santa Fe Avenue. TE7, revise Section 9.13. Track two height shall be, excuse me, track two height to be 45 feet, three stories. TE8, add Section 9.14. An additional no-build area, as noted on Exhibit B, shall be enforced. There shall be 50-foot no-build area, except for landscaping, sidewalks, water features, or other amenities. TE9, add to Section 9.15. In an effort to mitigate the proposed traffic impacts on the existing Wildwood neighborhood, the developer shall be required to install speed bumps, maximum of four, per the City of Oklahoma City Speed Abatement Program, along appropriate sections of Braniff Drive and Wildwood Drive, subject to the review, approval, and support of the Neighborhood Association and City Traffic Department. Installation shall be completed prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy within the, within track two. TE10, add to Section 9.19. At the time of submission of a specific plan, the developer shall notify the Wildwood Neighborhood Association of the, the application. TE11, signs shall be limited, the required, the allowed signs shall be limited to eight feet in height, and no pole sign shall be allowed. And these TE's are reflected in an exhibit that will be, go ahead, Mark.
One clarification, you said speed bumps, it's speed humps
Humps, sorry. Want to clarify that.
Big difference between the two.
Okay. That, have I sufficiently, okay.
All right.
I think Sarah is tired of me reading, so.
I just hope our recording didn't cut out. All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Pennington to recommend approval of city council of item PUD 2016, subject to the technical evaluations. Read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And that item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will reach out to schedule another meeting to continue the discussion. That brings us to item nine.
Item nine is PUD 2031, application to rezone 1328 East Hefner Road from R1.
Good afternoon. Mark Sitz at Johnson &amp; Associates, address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you, is an application that allows for a mix of commercial and office uses out on East Hefner Road. Thought if you can go to the zoning map, thank you. There's a mix of various school, office, commercial uses. There's a dance studio across the street. Under PUD 1443, that is a very dense residential neighborhood. And if you were to zoom out ever so slightly more, immediately to the west of Kelly, is a large, single-family subdivision under development now. And so in this screen capture, it looks like everything around us is very agricultural and very rural, but there's a significant amount of development going on in this area. So with that, staff has two TE's. We agree to both of them. We're happy to answer any questions. We would ask for your recommendation of approval.
All right. This is Ward seven. Commissioner Pennington?
Are you all tired of hearing from me yet?
Not at all.
I have met with the applicant. I think this is a great use of this property. I think everyone knows that this area is trending in that office slash commercial sort of direction. So I, I'm in full support of, of the application as proposed. And so if there's no questions or people signed up to speak, I'm ready to make a motion.
None.
Any comments from commissioners? Then I'm, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a city council approval of PUD 2031.
Motion from Commissioner Pennington to recommend the item to city council.
Including the technical evaluation, Mr. Chairman.
Subject to the technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item passes.
Thank you all.
Brings us to item 10.
Item 10 is KC 7683, preliminary plat of Silver Springs, located east of South County Line Road and south of Southwest 15th Street.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is the preliminary plat for Silver Springs. The PUD for this was approved Tuesday at city council. There are a handful of TE's, all of which we agree to, and we can delete TE number two, as we will provide the street stub, therefore no variance is necessary.
Commissioner Meek, this is Ward three.
Thank you, Chairman. I reviewed this, and the preliminary plat looks to be in conformance with the PUD that was approved at council on Tuesday. I'm prepared to make a motion. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Do not.
Okay. With that being said, I would recommend approval, to recommend approval with the following TE's, number one, three, four, five, six, and seven.
This, you know, on TE2, it says a street stub is required. They're providing it. I don't see why the, it's needed to delete the TE.
Whatever, we don't need a variance.
Right, we just don't need the variance.
So I think it's just subject to all the technical evaluation.
Okay. Then I recommend approval with the TE's as listed, one through seven.
All right. We have a motion to approve item C 7683. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item passes.
Thank you.
Brings us to item 11.
This is PUD 2029, application to rezone 8512, Southwest 29th Street, from R1.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The application before you is a PUD that would allow for the addition of a The application before you is a PUD that would allow for the addition of a multi-family housing development along Southwest 29th East of County Line Road. This is an area that's been fairly active here recently. We had the opportunity to have a community meeting, I think about two weeks ago. Commissioner Meek was able to join us. It was a small group of people that represented obviously a much broader group. This is the same developer that we came before you two weeks ago in Mr. Noble's ward, if you recall that, 192nd and Penn. There, I, I hope you recall the, the willingness that my client had to, to modify and concede on various points. And I think what I'm going to walk you through here today will show you that as it relates to this particular piece of property, they've done that as well. So it is worth noting that after that community meeting, an email was sent to us from one of the neighbors with a list of various items that they wished for us to agree to. And I'm going to read those and then read our response. First, they asked for a 70-foot buffer with a minimum of 20-foot green space on the east property line. So at the time, we had a 20-foot buffer, if you recall, again, the one in Mr. Noble's ward, we had a 20-foot buffer there. Here, again, they asked for a 70-foot buffer with 20 feet of green space. We agreed. We revised the PUD accordingly. Next, they asked for landscaping regulations to require a row of several six-inch caliper trees in the buffer along Eagle Lane, which is this east side. To provide 100% screening when fully mature. We agreed. We revised the PUD accordingly. Screening regulations to require an eight-foot masonry fence on all sides. So we agree that we will have an eight-foot masonry wall on the east to south and the west. We don't want it along the frontage. We would prefer to have a, an attractive fence with landscaping. Put an eight-foot wall on the frontage. I think it's a bad idea. It feels walled off. So we agree as it relates to the east, the south, and the west. I don't think they care about the north landscaping with wrought iron, something like that. I think it's a, it's a better look. Broadside of all buildings to face north and south. So we have agreed to that as well. Emergency entrance to line up with required stub, street of Buffalo Farms. So if you look at the TE, the TE requires that there be an access that meets fire department requirements. We agree. It will be on the south. Our only request is because we will have a private gated community that it's, it's an emergency access point with, you know, a Knox box. So it's not an access point where people can go back and forth. It's a fire access bar or emergency access, access that we agree to, but it's gated, so it's got to be a controlled access point. They asked us to, no entrance whatsoever on Eagle Lane. We agreed. Reduce density to 12 units an acre. We did not agree to that. We are at 15.6 units an acre, which in our opinion is really low density for a multi-family development. R4 base regulations would allow for up to 34 dwelling units per acre. We are right at 16 units an acre. No building height more than two stories. We can't agree to that. These will be three stories. But again, it is worth noting that because we're now 70 feet off the property line, we meet what R4 would require under the, the bulk standards, under the municipal ordinance. There are two requests about no drainage whatsoever into Lake 22 or onto Eagle Lane. Whatever the Public Works Department tells us we have to do at permitting as it relates to drainage and detention, et cetera, is what we'll have to do. Whatever the natural topography of the land is, is where it has to go. We can't alter the historic drainage patterns. So there was one that they asked us to do at the time and we said no, and that was 20, improve 29th Street to four lanes and put a signal at 29th and County Line. So as of yesterday afternoon, there were about nine requests, and I think we agreed to all of them except the three-story. And the, the drainage, because again, the drainage, we can't dictate. Your engineering staff is going to dictate that. So we had an application that was compliant with the comprehensive plan in terms of compatibility, in terms of density. The one TE, I already talked to, we agreed to that. When you read the, the lot of protests that you've all had, I think I can kind of fairly summarize it outside of we don't want apartments as a traffic concern. And a capacity concern as it relates to that traffic. So as of after 5:00 PM last night, my client has now agreed that they will pay at their own cost to widen Southwest 29th from County Line all the way east to where it is four-lane already. So that the entire mile east of County Line Road will now be four-lane at their cost. And in addition, my client at their cost will install a, a traffic signal at County Line. So County Line and Southwest 29th at the cost of my client will now be fully, a full intersection with traffic signals and a full four-lane mile along Southwest 29th. My belief is this is the first time any developers ever agreed to do this since the traffic impact fee ordinance has come into place. It's a significant concession. I think it's the major concern that you're going to hear and that we saw within the emails. There's nothing more that can be done as it relates to this application. We took an application that was already recommended for approval and continue to concede and concede and concede. Now, you may hear that County Line north and south of 29th is also a problem. Perhaps it is. That's on the city to go figure it out. You cannot require all infrastructure to be paid by private developers. We're willing to do a mile and pay for traffic signal. Perhaps the city can use some momentum created by this significant gift, I guess what it is, and go figure it out, north and south. But this is certainly a great step in the right direction. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, all those things I read are already revised, already in the PUD, so we don't need to add TEs. The TEs we need to add would be require a specific plan. Mr. Meek has asked for that. We agree with that. We need to add language requiring the eight-foot masonry wall to be on the south and the west. It's already on the east. And then a TE that says that 29th Street shall be widened from County Line moving east to meet the current point where Southwest 29th Street is four lanes. And require County Line and 29th to be signaled at the cost of the developer. Believe that the, those TEs would fairly encapsulate all the things I just read into the record. Well, and TE one modified to be gated, but we discussed that.
Commissioner Meek, you want to, I'm sure you're writing all those, those down, but do you have any initial questions?
Yeah, I have some comments. I think, and I know we have a lot of people sign up to speak, and I'm going to address that here in a second also. I want to give our neighbors the history according to Jeremy. As a builder of 30 years in this city with the, my family's construction company. There's been, this is a pretty major announcement as, as you just heard on the widening. That in and of itself, I think is a really big deal. It kind of, it kind of affects all of the neighborhoods in that area. And since 2017, since the impact fee was put in, developers haven't had to do this. And, but also I'll go on record and say the city hasn't kept up and done their part either. They take all these impact fees and then they don't do anything to help impact your area. So I appreciate that concession. I would probably guess that this is a $6 million commitment from the developer. Just in moving utilities, drainage, four-lane, and a signalized intersection. It's pretty major. So with that being said, I want to say that on that list, I was at that neighborhood meeting. I did speak to that group of neighbors that did represent the larger group. And even that last TE of not allowing them to build this until what he just gave to this application was completed, that one was even agreed to. Because now they're willing to do that, if that makes sense. I understand that through that list of concessions, they agreed to pretty much everything except the three-story to two-story. I did a lot of research. As you all know, this is a volunteer position and our training is about a couple hours and then they throw us on the fire. And all you get is to learn by experience. So I contacted staff and I asked about if, what the R1 to R4 step-down is. And because it is built into the subdivision regulations that an R4 can go in by an R1. And as you're closer to the R1, the height has to be lowered. And as you back up, it gets to do this. They could keep going up, but we've got that capped. We've got it capped at three stories and 40 feet, correct? Okay. With that being said, they are with, they are outside of that area. So there's not any change to base subdivision zoning guidelines there. I understand there's neighbors that period do not want apartments, that even the widening, even the signals doesn't change your opinion. I understand that, especially for the Shocks West addition because you're closer to the complex. I do want to go on record and state the Buffalo Farms is a, is a platted neighborhood that does have R4 apartments already, already approved, kind of like this last one that Commissioner Pennington dealt with. It already had, it already has a R4 component. You ju, you guys just haven't seen it. I've learned of this. It was approved. I don't know the PUD number that was approved, but it is, it went through council. These people by right are going to be building R4 apartment complexes in the Buffalo Farms addition, period. They have multi-family component allowed on so many acres. So they are possibly a year or more ahead of the, of this applicant. And, and it's all up to the developers which one goes first. This one could, could get approved, be built before Buffalo Farms does, or Buffalo Farms could be out there doing it next, starting next week. They have the right. So there is an R4. You can't say there's no apart, there's apartments three miles away as the crow flies. 2.6, I believe. I did the research. You can't say that there, that's the farthest they are away because there is going to be some in the Buffalo Farms addition. My biggest complaint, and I think you guys see the response to that complaint, is that this area has had, has been inundated with additions. Inundated with roofs that are coming. They, they're not even begin yet. If, when you leave that little church we had the meeting at, earth movers are everywhere. It's like being on, uh. It's a, it's a weird deal. Thank you for that map. If you look at this map that's up in front of you, it shows all of the, all of the things that have been released that have not been built yet. My biggest complaint was traffic. And adding 397, let's call it 400 more to what we've already released with the city not impacting this area by starting improvements. I spoke to the councilwoman about what is on the agenda for improvements in this area. And as far as you can look out on the city's documented list of improvements, there is nothing for this area because they had a recent resurfacing. So they took a street that needed to be widened and they made it new pavement, same width, vardishes, you know, nothing, nothing better. With that being said, I think this offer is, is a major improvement because apartments are not. All you guys are going to feel the consequences of not having this road widened and not having signals put at that intersection. And I believe this changes a lot of my outlook on this. With that being said, I'm going to ask you all very nicely, just like the chairman said at the beginning of the meeting. We don't need repeats. If, if you're signed up to speak and someone has said the same thing you're going to say, please don't, please don't get up here and think that you have to say the same thing. With that being said, I'd like to call on whatever neighbors want to come speak.
All right. We're going to hear from Kelly Work first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kelly Work. My office address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And I am here representing a group of homeowners that live in the Shocks Western Heights addition, which is the neighborhood that is directly adjacent to the east of the PUD 2029 subject property. The, many of their homes in the Western Heights addition front directly on Eagle Lane, which extends south from Southwest 29th Street, as you see. Directly adjacent on the east side of the PUD subject property. This proposal to build what could be up to 400 unit apartment units, three-story buildings, is not an appropriate land use at this location. We, we request that you deny it. The subject property, which fronts on Southwest 29th Street, is located a half-mile from the intersection of the section line roads at council and 29th and County Line and 29th. And if I could, I have a, an aerial photo that is a little bit broader than the one that is included with your packet. This is, I thought might be helpful to just give you a little bit broader view. This is a print of an aerial photo from the county assessor's office. And it is, was taken, I'm told, by the county assessors in, in June of this year. So this is a pretty current aerial photo of, of what exists. So the subject property, 25, a little over 25 acres, is outlined in red. This is 29th Street on the north. And what we asked them to do was to include the council road there on the east. So that's the, essentially what you see on the east boundary. And then it extends over to County Line Road on the west. So that's the, the one-mile section. This, of course, this neighborhood here is the Shocks Western Heights addition. That is, that is comprised of residential lots that range from about 1.5 acres to about three acres inside. And of course, they have the, which you'll hear from some of them. I know they are a few of them that are interested to speak to you. They enjoy the benefit of having that lake in the middle of their neighborhood. The, but the important point that I wanted to mention, and I thought this would be helpful to illustrate it, is that, is that this proposed R4 multi-family PUD that would allow up to 400 units is, is not at the corner. It is being proposed at the half-section. So a half-mile from either council or, and almost a half-mile from the County Line Road intersection with Southwest 29th Street. To the northeast, catty corner from the northeast corner of the subject property is the single-family residential neighborhood that is known as Coventry Manor. And then directly across the street to the north is, is a project, residential project that is larger lot development. It's, it's known as Anton's Landing. And it's in the process of being developed. It has a minimum lot size of a third of an acre within that development. And then Commissioner Meek referenced the Buffalo Landing. That is the area that is to the south and west of the subject property. And it is also just in the beginning stages of being developed. It is, it provides for a small lot, single-family residential development. It also allows some duplex R2-type development. And, and it, as Planning Commissioner Meek mentioned, it does have an R4 component, although I do want to offer one correction to, is my understanding, that that R4 component in the Buffalo Farms PUD is limited to senior independent living. So in our view, that is a much different use unit. In fact, it's defined as its own use unit under the zoning code. Distinct from general multi-family residential apartment use. So that use is permitted to be done in the Buffalo Farms development, but it is limited to the north half and it's limited to. but it is limited to the north half and it's limited to, uh, senior independent living. Um, it's important also that, uh, that, to recognize that, um, County Line Road is also two lanes and improved, um, and has bar ditches. And, uh, so it is also in need of significant, uh, improvement. Uh, has been mentioned already, but I just want to emphasize that this area has been experiencing significant and rapid residential development that has really outstripped the existing streets and other, other infrastructure. Uh, in addition to the built residential development, um, that is existing today, there are many thousands more residents that have been approved through, um, recent rezonings in, uh, in recent years. Um, the, um, one thing I think it's important to mention also is there, there are no connection sidewalks or crosswalks at the intersection of County Line and, um, and, uh, Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street. Uh, there's no, there are no available bus routes in this area. Uh, a, in our view, a four hundred unit, three-story buildings apartment development at this location would be dramatically out of character with the surrounding neighborhoods. And, uh, if you consider what are just generally accepted urban planning principles, a multifamily residential development at this density uh, would ordinarily be directed to the intersection of the arterial streets. And then you would see an appropriate reduction in density as you move away from the intersections with the arterials toward the middle, middle of the section. What this proposal does is essentially turn that notion on its head and is proposing a four hundred unit apartment complex here in the middle of the section that is surrounded by single-family residential neighborhoods, both established and currently under development. Now, we understand why the developer dominion may have been drawn to this particular site because we expect the price per acre is probably significant less, significantly less uh, at, for a location here that is at the half-section line versus one that would be nearer and closer to, to a hard corner or nearer to the intersection of the arterials. One thing I think also that you should consider is if a proposed R four multifamily residential use would be, were to be approved at this location, it would establish a precedent that could be applied to the remaining property between this and County Line Road. If you were to approve this application, would you be, be in a position, you may want to consider, to turn down others that may come before you between this location and County Line Road on both sides of Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street? So we would suggest that by, that if this project is to receive approval, that you would be setting a precedent, opening the door for additional applications that you would be, that you would have a difficult time, uh, turning down, uh, because of the precedent this one would, would set. The only access that is available, that is proposed in connection with this PUD is from, um, Twenty-Ninth Street. Uh, the traffic problems that are existing in this area will only be exacerbated with a four hundred unit complex with, uh, access limited to, uh, Twenty-Ninth Street. Um, it would, in our view, uh, would be a inappropriate land use at this location and would have a significant adverse impact on, not only on the Western Heights addition immediately to the east, but on the other residential neighborhoods in this area. I know there are a number of the residents that, um, that have signed up to speak. And, uh, so I'll, um, end my remarks. Uh, in our view, this is simply a, um, an inappropriate land use at this location. And a, a more appropriate location would be one that is on a hard corner or much nearer to the intersection of the arterials. This one is going to have a significant harmful effect on these existing residential neighborhoods. And we request that you deny PUD twenty twenty-nine. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I know that the, a number of the residents have an order that they, um, would like to speak in. And I'll, I'll, uh, I think that may have been provided to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I do have that. So I, I believe I've got them in the order. Uh, any questions for Mr. Work?
Yeah, I, I have a question, Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Um, could you, I, I definitely hear you. I think, I think it's a really good argument that we intend for the density to be the most intense at the intersections. I get that. I, I follow that argument and then less intense as you move further away. I, I follow that. Help me understand how paving, how the widening of, of Twenty-Ninth Street and, um, the signalization at, I believe it's Twenty-Ninth and County Line. How does that impact your analysis? Because to me, that sounds like a significant concession.
It would have been helpful. I think it would have been useful if the applicant had communicated that to us. They have chosen not to do that for some reason until today. Uh, we'd certainly be happy to sit down and discuss that with them and, uh, and continue the discussions about this proposed development. Um, frankly, I, I don't know why they didn't choose to tell us that, but it's clearly because they're, they're, they're viewing that they're negotiating with you and not with us.
Well, I'm not going to get in between on, on that. I mean, they, this is an application before the Planning Commission, but we certainly value the input of neighbors. Um, but I guess what I'm wanting to know is if we're, the argument is the traffic isn't a very, is problematic, which I definitely agree is problematic. I guess I'm wanting to know, does this alleviate that concern at all? Or is it just like, no, it just doesn't fit the character and so we just don't care? It doesn't matter?
Well, there's no question that, uh, improving Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street is needed and will help to allevi, alleviate the traffic congestion that exists in this area. There's no question about that, certainly.
Okay.
Okay. Um, first neighbor is Mr. James Legby?
Legabo.
Legabo? I apologize.
Hello. My name is James Legali. I live at three thousand South Eagle Lane. And I'm one of many residents that oppose the rezoning of eighty-six twelve Southwest Twenty-Ninth, also known as PUD twenty twenty-nine. Also speak on a couple of my neighbors that weren't able to attend due to health reasons. As I read through the verbiage of PUD twenty twenty-nine paperwork, I, I got a sickness in my belly. If you've ever read something and you're like, this is wrong, but I don't know why. I, I had that, kind of that gnaw. And I have several concerns with the site, including flooding and pollutants into our lake where I myself take my, my children to go fish on a regular basis. And I see the rest of the neighbors go and enjoy this wonderful little asset that we have. Oh, the fact that it's located so far from the city arteries, ar, arteries, if I'm saying that correctly. It doesn't fit with what I've come to understand where apartments typically are. The lowering of surrounding property values. I simply would not have bought my property had there been an apartment complex across the street. I wouldn't have even looked at it. I would have driven right past and been continuing to look. And I believe that would go on whenever we come to finally move on to other locations. Even isolated from city services like parks, transportation, and a heavily car-dependent area. So the shopping, restaurants, city services that everybody uses is very car-dependent and we're going ten, fifteen minutes for fairly small items. But none of these were really that, that wrench in my stomach. I actually found that as I kept going over the paperwork. In Section Four, it states, "The relationship between the proposed use of this parcel and the above adjoining land use is compatible. The proposed use of this property is in harmony with the surrounding zoning." Not only in my opinion, but in my experience, that statement is simply false. Written by someone that doesn't understand the area or is willing to be intellectually dishonest with the truth. A nearly four hundred unit complex is not in harmony or compatible with the half to two-plus acre homes and residences that surround it. It's not compatible with the rural look and feel that brought so many to the area that we get to enjoy today. No amount of brick, masonry, wrought iron, or blacktop can replace the ability to know everyone on your street. I've talked to every resident on my street. Talked to most of the residents that, behind me on Lightner and Southwest Thirty-Fifth. I've talked to multiple residents from the neighborhoods around us. The message is clear. Please save our neighborhoods. Don't rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Chastain?
Thank you for listening to me. You're going to have to forgive me if I get emotional.
Uh, I understand it's very emotional. If you can, just have your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Terry Chastain. I live on thirty-three oh one South Lightner Lane. I live with my parents. I'm here to represent them. My father is Leon Manick. He's ninety years old. My mother is one de Manick. She's eighty-eight years old. We bought this property in nineteen seventy-two. We live on the lake, right across on the east side. My dad bought this property to move us out to the suburbs so we could enjoy the suburb life. We understand the city grows. We've watched it grow up all around us since we've been out there. But to come along and to put an apartment complex right there? I sit there at night and I watch sunsets. I guarantee you, you talk about changing your neighborhood? I guarantee you, you allow that apartment complex to come in there? I will never see another sunset. I will be looking, I don't even care if you make them two-story. I'm going to be looking at apartments. Think about how that changes your life. So I'm asking you, please, I respectfully ask you, please, do not rezone this. While I've been sitting here today, listening to what you guys are talking about on the PUD twenty sixteen, it's like I'm here in my future. You allow this rezoning? We're going to have to be dealing with that. We're going to have to be dealing with this many apartments or this many apartments? This or this? So just, please, just deny the rezoning. I can tell you, as somebody that's been out there, I was twelve years old when I went out there. I'm sixty-three right now. I can tell you what the traffic will do for putting in a four-lane between Council and County Line. It will do nothing. Thank you for the proposal. We appreciate that. But it will do nothing because once you hit County Line, it's, it's two lanes. Just like you said, they're not going to change that. They just resurfaced that. So what are you going to do? So what's it going to do for one mile to put four lanes? And then what happens? And then you hit stop signs. It already backs up right there. You already have to sit there at five o'clock traffic on County Line and Southwest Twenty-Ninth. But you're going into two lanes in every other direction. So it's really not going to help. So I am please asking you, deny this request to rezone. Keep it single-family. Look at it. Everybody is single-family around there. It's all single-family. And to plot an apartment complex in the middle of all that? Please, please.
Thank you, Ms. Testy. Ms. Amy Martin?
Hello. My name's Amy Martin and I reside at thirty-three hundred South Eagle Lane. And the proposed development will be right outside my front door and visible from my backyard. Do you know, hardly anybody even knew where Eagle Lane was until this came about. I had to tell people. People drive by it, don't even know we're there. We're five houses on a dead-end street. I'd like to share what makes our neighborhood so unique. Those of us in Shocks Western Height reside on two to three acres with gorgeous old trees that are forty feet high. We have a five point five acre lake that's stocked with fish that everyone enjoys with their friends and their family. We all know each other and just celebrated our neighbor's night out. We are the type of community that waves at the cows across the street. And we've named our herons Henry, Henrietta, and Harvey. We even have ducks named Romeo and Juliet. And imagine my surprise when I came home one day to find two hundred and sixteen pelicans just chilling on our lake. Now, people who want to enjoy an outdoor lifestyle around a lake aren't going, aren't going to want to live next to such a high-density area. We are concerned about the value of our houses and the investments we have made that make them our home. Increasing the density is going to create more noise, more pollution, and more traffic. It will make all our commutes longer and create unsafe conditions on the roads. This area has already outgrown its infrastructure and adding three hundred and ninety-six apartments is only going to exacerbate the existing problem. More trash and cont, and contaminants will end up in our lake just like it did when Kings Ridge and West, and Winds West were being built. When I was at Cedar Ridge, there was trash all over the lots that were being built. And that's going to happen on this new build, too. In twenty twenty-one, our neighborhood paid a lake management company over thirteen thousand dollars to clean up our lake. And we don't even have an HOA. So all us neighbors, we all banded together to make that happen. All the silt, all the contaminants, pest control, lawn pesticides, they all wound up in our lake. And that damage doesn't happen immediately. It took several years. This harmed our neighborhood financially and damaged our way of life. Our properties slope down to the lake so that we all have a beautiful view of our homes. This proposed site of PUD two oh two nine, it sits up higher. So our house already sits lower and our land slopes down to the lake. So now picture us, we're down at our lake fishing. We turn around to walk up the hill, back to our home, and what do we see? Three hundred and ninety-six apartments. And they are going to appear much taller than forty feet because again, we're down lower. Our house is about thirteen feet tall. It was built in nineteen seventy-two. This development would be extremely dense compared to all the other properties in our community. It's not appropriate. The Smiths, the Hovys, and the Maldens also all reside on Eagle Lane and couldn't be here. And they are unable to speak. But they're also in agreement that PUD, that this PUD, it's not a good use of the land. They have all lived on Eagle Lane for more than twenty-five years. Some of them for forty-eight years. You just heard about Terry, who's lived there since she was twelve. Apartments are known to have a large influx of people, which is vastly out of character for our neighborhood. Lot, uh, lots of our homes have the original owner still residing in them. They've been fishing in that same lake for over fifty-two years. PUD twenty twenty-nine just doesn't fit our neighborhood and you're not going to convince me otherwise. Now, every single one of us knew that the field would be developed one day and that we would look out and see single-family homes. But no one ever fathomed that it would be requested to build three hundred and ninety-six apartments at this location because it's just so inappropriate and out of character. It just does not make any sense to put such high-density housing next to large lots. Listen to this. We are on two point eight acres. That development will have three hundred and ninety-six apartments on twenty-five acres. Now compare that to our neighborhood of Shocks Western Heights. What are you going to find in twenty-five acres? You're going to find ten homes. So now you want these ten homes on twenty-five acres to look at three hundred and ninety-six units on twenty-five acres? Talk about a mismatch. It's just, it's insulting. We are present today, we're talking about PUDs, we're talking about laws, we're talking about zoning, terrible roads, traffic jams, no sidewalks, no crosswalks, zero bike lanes, no public transit. We didn't hear anything. Apparently they're not buying a bus line to put in. Overcrowded schools, the lack of infrastructure or green space. But let's not forget about the communities that surround
Thirty seconds remaining.
this property. We have Coventry Manor, Antoine's Landing, Winds West, Kings Ridge, Westbrook, Walden Creek, Morgan Creek, Cedar Ridge, Fountain Grass. And let's not forget those of us at Shock, Shocks Western Heights who'd have to live next to these. Not one of these ten neighborhoods feel this project fits the character. Not one of these 10 neighborhoods feel this project fits the character. And I personally knocked on hundreds of doors, and you all have received at least 250 letters, and I'm here to speak for those who cannot be here today. We deplore you, we beg of you, we plead of you to deny this PUD. The people have spoken, and we are asking you to honor our homes, our properties, our lakes, our community, and our life by voting to deny PUD 2029. It's not appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Karen Hall.
My name is Karen Hall. I live at 3212 Chesterfield Place in Oklahoma City. My husband died in 2020, and we lived in Lawton on a farm. I then relocated to Oklahoma City, because my daughter and, I'm sorry, my daughter and four grandchildren live in Yukon, and my parents are in assisted living in southwest Oklahoma City. I bought a house in Morgan Creek, and the backyard purposely backed up to 29th or to County Line Road, because there was acreage out there. There was, there were cows. I felt like I was at home there. Then Buffalo Development, they are in, and they are mowing, I mean, they're cutting roads, and they're not paving yet, but all the dirt work is being done. If you look at that, I've been told there's 484 homes, units, going in that area between this plot and County Line. If you put another 400 homes, residences, right there, that's like 800 in that little bitty area that is not used to at all having that kind of traffic. Along with that, we're gonna have increased crime, and one reason why I like that spot is because, as a widow, I felt safe there. I go out at night and I walk my two dogs, and I don't know how much longer I'm gonna feel safe, but I still do. But if you put an apartment complex there that's three stories, it's just going to, like, suffocate us. Those of us that live in that community, we lived there for a reason. It was peaceful. It was quiet. It still is, but it's not gonna be, and I'm just begging you to cut down on what we can cut down on now, because this was not zoned for apartments. And an assisted living is not like a normal apartment. Assisted living people don't drive. They all get on a bus and they go somewhere together. It's very minimal effect on the community, but this apartment complex would be major on our community. Please leave our country our peace, our quiet, that we all paid for alone as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Kofed.
My name is Beverly Kofed, and my address is 8425 Southwest 35th Street, and it's in the Shocks Western Heights addition. The proposed apartment complex is directly northwest of my property. I mean, we're gonna be like this. I'm opposed to the PUD and request that it be denied. I purchased my home in January of 1981. At that time, it was mostly farms and some houses in there. The Shocks addition that we're in only has one way in and out, and that's Southwest 29th, and that also is for Coventry Manor north of us. We only have one way in and out. Since moving in there, there have been 11 additions that have been put in: Coventry Manor, Morgan Creek, which is still being developed, Walden Creek, Westbrook, Fountain Grass, Antoine's Landing, Kings Ridge West, Cedar Ridge, which is also still being developed, and Antoine's Landing is still being developed, Winds West, Buffalo Farms, which is exactly right next to our property, and Bellflower. Southwest 29th and County Line Roads are two-lane minor arterial roads. County Line Road is in very poor condition. They both have continued increased traffic because of all the additions that we have on there, and adding a three-story, 400-unit, 900-parking-spot apartment complex will make it difficult for all of us. I was behind a school bus last week, and we were both wanting to make a right-hand turn, and the bus sat there for three minutes trying to be able to get out. Finally, he gassed it, and luckily, the car behind him backed off his speed so that he didn't rear-end him. Data shows, has shown, that apartment complex of 400 units would have approximately 700 or more children. From the teachers and the parents that I've talked to, they said that the School, Western Heights School District, has 35 kids in each classroom. They have trouble finding the bus drivers, so they're having to run two runs a day, in the morning and in the evening. On that, that they are having kids that have to sit on the floor of the bus because their seats are all taken. Some of them are getting picked up a little bit after 6 o'clock in the morning and don't get home till 5 o'clock at night. The teachers and the parents are concerned about having that many children coming into the Western Heights School District. The other issue I have is that we have increased water runoff from the Winds West and the Kings Ridge West developments. These two developments are exactly south of ours. The houses across the street of us back up to the houses in these two additions. We were having so much flooding that we hired an engineer to come out and assess what we can do to alleviate our flooding. So we brought in a bunch of dirt, raised our front yard, dug out deeper ditches in the front, putting bigger tin horns in it, and that cost us over $20,000. We carry flood insurance. We still have flooding that gets sometimes two feet from the corner of my house, and then all this water goes into our no-name lake. So when you add that with the amount of water that can possibly come from having the apartments in there, I mean, Winds West and Westbrook, or not Westbrook, but Kings Ridge West, they had the assessments on there on the water runoff, and they supposedly complied with all of it. We still have a lot of water runoff, and that is a big concern. And so, that's what I have to say. If anybody wants
Any questions for Ms.? Go ahead. All right, thank you. Gary Kofed.
Gary Kofed, 8425 Southwest 35th Street. And as Beverly said, our house is just immediately south and east of the apartments. We are opposed to this PUD 2029 and request that the application be denied, as that's the consensus of all our surrounding neighbors and neighborhoods. A large-scale apartment complex does not respect the existing rural characteristics of the neighborhoods in question. The application shows 400 apartment units under the terms of the proposed PUD. This is completely out of area character with the neighboring areas. All existing and currently developing neighborhoods are single-family residential, with some two-family residential units resembling single-family units in the area. We were aware and are aware, or I am aware, of the R4 component of Buffalo Development, with the understanding, when it was being discussed with those guys, it was gonna be senior living center, which is completely different than an apartment complex, in my The Shocks addition in our area, to the south of the apartments, or the east of the apartments, are on two-acre lots. Anton Landings, 1.25 dwellings per acre. Coventon Manor to the north, that's on approximately half the acre units. On the Development Buffalo Farms developing papers, it showed 5.85 dwellings per unit. The location of the apartments is in no way complementary to the surrounding neighborhoods. The development does not provide benefits to the surrounding neighbors by any means. The apartments does not improve or add value or benefits to the quality of life of the residents surrounding properties. The proposed apartments are incompatible with the existing neighborhoods. The development is, I'm gonna couch this, we're gonna have to need further discussion, I believe, what would be the impact of widening Southwest 29th, which is by no means guaranteed as of yet. The development is located on a minor arterial street at the halfway point between County Line Road and Council. This portion of Southwest 29th, as well as County Line Road, can easily be described as old blacktop section line farm roads. Maybe one will be improved. With the continuing residential development along Southwest 29th and County Line, traffic is currently overtaxed. The Bellflower, Bellflower West, Silver Springs, and Buffalo Farms will add approximately 2,000 dwelling units, according to their development papers, with the related cars and trucks further taxing traffic and not improving any safety concerns. It's inappropriate to construct a 400-unit apartment complex at a half-mile point in the middle of a section line. The area is bounded by existing single-family residential areas and neighborhoods. Locating the apartment complex is out of character when compared with other apartments built or being built in the area. All other apartment complexes are located at or near the intersections of a major arterial street or another major arterial street or minor arterial street, or they're in a large mixed-use development that is on a major arterial street. Access to the complexes are four-lane, which do not overly tax access to the apartments. That's not saying four lanes would provide any additional benefit to the neighborhoods. The existing Southwest 29th County Line infrastructure is not capable of safely accommodating the existing traffic, nor any traffic attributable to the construction and the residence of the apartments. We don't see, you've already heard, there's no foreseeable plans for the city to improve Southwest 29th nor County Line Road. As such, the apartment complex is a detriment to the existing neighborhoods, both economically and economically to the quality of life. In conclusion, the 400-unit apartment complex is not an appropriate use of the subject lands. The requested applications to rezone should be designed. Zone 1 residential is what we really need. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kofed. Scott Eagleston.
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Eagleston. I live at 3300 South Eagle Lane. My property borders the east side of the, of PUD 2029, and I'd like to address how this proposed change can be detrimental to our lake. Shortly after the neighborhood was built in the '70s, several of the homeowners invested in the lake, and they had it dredged out to make it wider, deeper, more picturesque, and the lake was problem-free until construction started on the Winds West and Kings Ridge neighborhoods to the south. I'm confident all the city codes were followed, you know, when that construction happened, but those codes didn't prevent all the trash, pollution, and flooding that started affecting the most important feature and ecosystem in our neighborhood. Those issues continue to this day. The homeowners have spent tens of thousands of dollars fixing their property and cleaning up the lake due to forces not attributed to just normal wear and tear. Myself and the rest of the homeowners around Oklahoma No Name 22 Lake are deeply concerned that this is gonna continue to be the case and even make it worse. As you can see from the contour map in the PUD, everything slopes down from about the center of the, the center of the property in between Eagle Lane and County Line and 29th, towards the, towards the lake, and the low point is right at a junction where the lake and Eagle, excuse me, where the lake and Eagle Lane meet. This is a point where water flows out of the lake during heavy rain events. But as proposed in this PUD, if you look at their diagram, is that is gonna be closed off. So that's gonna be one less outlet for water to flow out of our lake during heavy rains. The only place it will flow out of would be through a wash flowing north out of the lake, crossing 29th Street, which floods frequently. The intersection of 29th and Lightner is frequently underwater during heavy rains. Oklahoma City has the motto, you know, "Turn around, don't drown." Safety ads all over the place, you know, which means we got homeowners that are either unable to leave their houses, leave their neighborhood, or unable to return home because of these floodwaters. And we're not talking just about 100-year rains, 50-year rains, 10-year flooding events. This happens every single year, multiple times a year. The proposed PUD also shows the Western Wash, excuse me, I already spoke of that. PUD 1941, named Buffalo Farms, which is located to the south and west of the property, was approved last year. During that PUD review, we expressed our deep concerns regarding our lake to the developer, and those concerns were addressed. When we asked the current developer about that, they didn't even address those concerns. They just completely ignored them. Now, I understand this land is gonna be developed in some aspect. You know, more roofs, more concrete, less green space equals more runoff, more chemical contamination, and more flooding. Rezoning the R4 increases our property's vulnerability to further damage. Keeping the current R1 zoning will at the very least lessen the impact of the increased flooding and chemical contamination in our lake. When we considered purchasing our home back in 2021, we knew that the adjacent land would eventually be developed. But we did take the time to research, and we're happy to learn that the zoning was R1, it would still stay single-family homes. We never fathomed that it could just be rezoned and 400 apartment units could go in. It's so out of character with the surrounding neighborhoods. With all the land in the vicinity of 20th and County Line already developed, or development in progress, this feels like we're almost changing the rules in the fourth quarter of a game. Included in the city's comprehensive plan, Plan OKC, the following language is found:
Thirty seconds remaining.
I quote, "We will preserve the rural character and grow efficiently by managing the growth of urban development. Without careful phasing of infrastructure extensions and development in new areas, we will continue to use infrastructure inefficiently, create land-use conflicts with existing farms, and change the character of the land for people who built homes or made other investments based on rural character." The plan further states Oklahoma City has a substantial amount of rural residential development within its city limits. The integrity and rural character of this development should be respected as previous investments in infrastructure are efficiently used. PUD 2029 is a direct contradiction
Mr. Eagleston, your time is up.
...to this plan. Please deny the rezoning change. Shoehorning 15 buildings, 396 units, and 800 parking spaces in this parcel will have a tremendously detrimental physical and financial impact on our neighborhood, and it's a radical departure from the character of our surrounding community.
All right, thank you. Michael Brooks.
Hello. And so, name and address?
Yes, please.
Excellent. And so, my name is Michael Brooks Jimenez. My address is 5708 Southwestern Avenue. And so, I had a speech prepared, but given some of the announcements, because I think one of my greatest concerns had to do with traffic, I was somewhat taken aback by some of the announcements of the mitigation that's been offered, and so, so I've had to change my speech up just a little bit. And so, the first thing that I want to do is I want to thank Jeremy Meek for his commitment, service, and advocacy in what often is a thankless job. And I want to thank each of you for your service as well, because I understand that there's not a lot of recognition for what you do, but it's very obvious, this being my first meeting, how seriously you take your jobs. And so, first of all, I want to thank you. The other, the other thing that I want to do is I want to recognize Ronnie Morris, the mayor of my neighborhood, which is Westbrook, just on the other side of County Line Road from the area that we're discussing. His advocacy also has, has gone, it has been amazing to me in what he's been able to do, to be able to stay engaged and to be able to advocate for our neighbors. Last thing that I want to do is to be able to express the overwhelming pride for my neighbors on Lightner and Eagle Lanes for participating and advocating for themselves in this process. I empathize with them, and I fully support their right to voice their opposition. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Jimenez.
No, thank you.
Okay. Daniel Page.
Thank you. So, Brian Cohen, address is 9101 Southwest 32nd Street, Oklahoma City. So, I too would like to thank each of you for the thankless job that you do, let you know that I'm not just here representing myself and my family, but I'm here as the president of Morgan Creek HOA, representing currently 906 lots in Ward 3. But not just the neighborhood, but also the community that you see behind us. I think you've noticed everyone wearing yellow. They are here together. When you hear "community," it is truly a group of our neighborhoods, a group of our families that work together. Mr. Meek, I appreciate the research that you did in understanding more about the area. I appreciate Commissioner Pennington, the comments that you made earlier of wanting to understand what the facts truly are, and understand the impact on the community, and thinking of it as if you live there. In good faith, I believe that all of you share that same view that Mr. Pennington shared. I would like to address the specific question that you asked earlier in terms of widening of 29th. I too have changed what I was going to say, in honoring your request not to duplicate. And while I understand that it is, seems like a big concession, I also think it is something that doesn't truly address the issue and the concerns of traffic. 29th Street, for miles in either direction, is a two-lane road. You're talking about widening it to a four-lane road for one mile. So you are feeding traffic into a four-lane, and then feeding it back into a two-lane, and it doesn't truly address the concern of traffic, because County Line, which is also a concern, is a two-lane road. To your point, this area has been neglected by the city. I would challenge any of you to take a drive down County Line. I will not be responsible for the repairs to your vehicle, nor would I be responsible for your dental bills when you lose a filling driving down that road. I see Mr. Meek agreeing, so he understands the concern there. What I would say is, the concern with widening the road is, again, it doesn't address the true issue, and I understand Mr. Boxpoint that they can't do all of the roads in the area. But the city has not addressed the roads of concern. I do not believe the city would have the funding to continue the upkeep of a widened road if they cannot even address the roads that exist, so that is something to consider. What I would say also is, is that Mr. Box earlier mentioned an email that he received from a resident. That does not represent my point of view in terms of the concessions that I would want. I do have concerns over the community. I do have concerns over our neighbors and the impact to them, not only just to me. And you've noticed that while there is some excitement in the voices, there's also sadness in these voices, there's concern. I don't hear anger, I hear fear, and I hear sadness of people losing what they worked so hard to get to. These people aren't here fighting for no development and for no increase in the city in terms of housing. I think we would all agree, we want people to be able to own homes. Changing from an R1 to an R4 does not do that. And we do agree with progress, we do agree with development, and everyone here that's spoken so far is in agreement that we're okay with homes being built. You haven't seen this group here fighting the other development in the area, and as you've heard, there is a large amount of development all around there. So we appreciate everything that you do. I do hope that you will take to heart the voices of the people here, and I do hope that each of you will do what Mr. Pennington said, and think of yourself living in that neighborhood. Think of this being built in your backyard, and vote accordingly to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that's everyone I have signed up to speak, so that'll conclude public comment, and we can turn it over to commission for discussion. Mr. Meek, would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir, I would. I want to hear from my fellow commissioners. Before I start that process, I want to tell the neighbors and the people that have spoken about what I've learned from this process. This is controversial, but here we go. We work with the applicant to make as many concessions as we can, to put as many guardrails on as we can, to get as much from them as we can, and in this case, I believe it's substantial. I need you all to listen to this part very carefully. When we do that, and we recommend an approval, it has all of that stuff included. It goes to council. Council, this is a council decision. Planning Commission's job is to try to make as, whether you hate the product, to make as good of a product as we can to send to council. Then the battle goes to council, and that's where you guys need to go, to council. If we recommend denial, this thing goes to council without any of the improvements that we're speaking of, unless the applicant, who just got denied, wants to voluntarily chase those things we worked on to this point and offer them to council, which I have seen not be done. It's kind of like, you have a contract, you don't agree to the contract, well, they're going to try to run it through anyway with the original master design statement. They have that option. I believe, I want to hear from my other commissioners, I believe we've had, it's unfortunate, the part of this I hate for the most is the people on Eagle Lane that face this, you're going to get a, you're going to get an eight-foot masonry wall if this is approved, and you're going to have a 70-foot buffer with a, with a 70-foot no-build line with a landscape buffer. I understand elevations matter and heights. I understand that, and I would request that this applicant, if it is to get approved at council, that the engineer that they hire be an engineer that, like the last engineer on Buffalo, works with you guys to save and protect the lake. I'm going to quit jabbering, I just wanted to, I just wanted to explain the process to you guys. It kind of feels like, because whether you guys know it or not, other than your neighborhood meetings and other than your letters to Mr. Box, there has been a lot of negotiations going on with myself and with this group. Even until late last night, with the, with the new road widening and signalized intersection that has came from last night in the late hour. So, with that being said, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners about what your thoughts are regarding this application.
I think a few things. One, I think it would be helpful, because we're here twice a month, we, we understand the analysis that the city of Oklahoma City uses when it comes to addressing drainage. So, I think it might be helpful if we had a brief, if possible, explanation of the review that the city will do, because it's not going to be up to the developer to decide whether they do appropriate drainage. The city and Public Works staff will be making those decisions about the way in which that's reviewed. So I think it'd be helpful for our neighbors to understand that.
Yeah. I'm with Public Works. The typical process, how it works, we'll get a set of plans that will show how the drainage is, and the ordinance requires to maintain existing drainage path. So if the flow is going from this neighborhood to the lake, they still have to accept that flow, but the requirements will be have a detention pond that will maintain the same flow that was going from, before the development was built. So...
So you're saying, wait a second, so you're saying things would be, things have to stay like they are? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
And so is that the standard that the city is going to use when they evaluate this project?
Right. So we'll receive the plans and the drainage study, and our tech review department goes through the review, go to check prints, and once they're satisfied, then it gets approved by the Public Works.
Quick point of clarification, is my understanding is, where drainage leaves the property cannot change, and it cannot be increased at that point, it can only be decreased.
Right. They have to take into account all of the impervious area, that the roof of the apartments and the parking lot of the apartments are going to speed the water up, and then they have to put in measures, whether it's riprap, whether it swells, whether it's...
A pond.
A pond, detention. They have to not let water out of that development faster than it came historically.
And also, in our current ordinance, which allowed only the 100-year flow that we were regulating, but council just approved ordinance on Tuesday, that will require them effective January 1st, two-year, 10-year, any small event that will be regulated, controlled by the, by the pond. So that'll...
In layman's terms, correct me if I'm wrong, that improves the drainage ordinance to not just look at 100-year rain events, now the engineers have to look at two-year rain events, five-year rain events, things, you know, their bar was too high.
Yeah. So any smaller event, they also have to maintain what's in existing, not just 100-year. So that will help downstream properties.
I was expecting to hear a statement, instead of 100-year flood, they have to design a 500-year flood or 200-year flood. But I'm still unclear what you're saying. How do the other flood events get taken into consideration, aside from 100-year floods? Because we're getting 100-year floods very often.
That's what it's saying.
Okay.
I don't know when we had last 100-year flood, but I don't think we had a recent 100-year flood, but...
Well, maybe not we in OKC, but it is happening in the world.
Yes, yeah. So before, our ordinance only required if a large 100-year flood happens, say you have X amount of water going in, so they compare existing proposed, and you control that. But it does not control what's happening in 50-year, smaller rain events that are more frequent. For example, 10-year event is more frequent than 100-year more frequent event. So now the new ordinance will require them to also look at these more frequent events, and it's not increase the flow going downstream.
Right. Their coefficient was too high.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they've changed their coefficient for drainage to improve runoff on smaller events.
And that will be also in line with a lot of other communities of our size, where we have to control these other rain events. 500-year, I don't think we design anything for that, it'll be almost economically impossible to do that.
Understood.
They're going to need a boat.
Can I add one more, one word on drainage issue? Because that was one that I was tuning into, which I heard, I'm looking at the contour maps, and it looked to me like the site discharges, this proposed development would discharge right across from the lake, across at Eagle Lane, in No Name Lake. But I also heard one of the gentlemen that spoke said that No Name Lake discharges at that point in high-water event, or backwaters. So what are we, what are we talking about here? If both, if we're allowed to, if this development, not me, is allowed to discharge water at the current rate at that point, which is a low point based on contours, and No Name Lake also overflows at that point in rain events, where's that water going then? This is a concern of mine on the drainage issue that I haven't, I don't have a good answer for yet.
Lake has an outlet or spillway on the other side, and it should overtop from that side instead of coming from here.
So is that the part that goes north to Southwest 29th, then?
Yeah.
I don't, we're not looking at the contours on paper, on the screen, but...
I don't know where the spillway is, where the lake is, but that's where it should be.
Mr. Lagar, do you have an answer to the question? Okay, you can come to the mic, please.
And I'm trying to get to whether we need to address this in a little more detail to put some additional protection in, if we were to even move forward, but...
And I've been told that we should have some pictures that's been given up to show some of this, but it discharges on the northeast side and ends up actually flooding 29th.
Okay.
It, you know, it will block off Lightner Lane and another point of concern even at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's worth noting that the analysis is the same, regardless of whether it was a single-family home.
Right. It will be the same.
Or, yeah.
Considers impervious, and what's going there now, and they will have to retain anything they're going to increase.
So if it is discharging into 29th Street, when the, assuming this goes forward, the developer does as he promises, redoes the street, will he have to take the discharged water into the storm sewer that he left to install?
Well, like Mr. Box said, if they're going to develop 29th Street, yes, it has to be done with our city standards. That will require drainage as part of the improvement as well, though it needs to be sized to make sure it can, it does not flood the street.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question? I know Mr. Eggleston had intended to show some pictures, and could, I think that may be perhaps helpful in this explanation about the flooding and where the lake exit, the water exits from when it's full.
Right.
If you, if you would allow it, perhaps that would be helpful to allow Mr. ...
I want to jump in and say that thanks to Mr. Kofelt and Kofed, I'm sorry, we've all had these pictures sent to us, we've had the videos, we've all seen it. With the improvements of, if this was to pass, the drainage would be handled on 29th and a road widening, because instead of bardages, you would have storm drain into the city's storm drain system.
Anything else?
Well, I mean, I want to make sure we don't, everyone that has concerns can speak up, but I did have a couple other thoughts anyways.
Well, go ahead then.
But not, it's not on drainage issue with this particular item.
Okay. I think we've covered the drainage issue.
One last thing I want to say, and I do want to hear more from you guys. I need some help with this, and it's a, it's a difficult application, I understand, especially for the people on Eagle Lane, but you guys got to understand, I know you would love R1 to stay there. If this applicant that has a contingency on this, to purchase this lot, doesn't, get an approval through council, the for sale sign's staying there, and someone else is going to come and do the same thing, and you're all going to be back. And, and you just got to understand, this is part of the game.
Right.
I think it would be, I think it'd be helpful if the, if Mr. Box would address, let's talk about the height along Eagle Lane. What concessions, if any, can be made about the height of buildings along Eagle Lane?
Well, so, in terms of concessions, one, we now have a 70-foot setback. We have reoriented the buildings so that the broad side of any building faces north or south and not east. So, we feel like those two concessions are big concessions, because now we're not, we're not altering the base zoning as relates to height. Now we meet the height regs of R4, because we have that excessive setback. And, if you recall, one of the other items was they wanted six-inch caliber trees, which are massive. We agreed to do that within the 20-foot landscape buffer. We believe we have adequately mitigated any impact as it relates to the east.
So what's the difference in the max height of what's currently proposed, the way that it's written in the PUD, and R1, for example?
Well, R1 would allow... Well, R1 would allow 35 feet and two and a half stories, but of course, depending on how the buildings are oriented, rather than 70 feet, it would be 10 or 20 feet? What is the R1 rear yard? 10. So developed under its current zoning, we would be 10 feet off the property line, no buffer, of course, no masonry wall, 35 feet in height with no trees. Instead, we're 70 feet away, a 20-foot landscape buffer with six-inch caliper trees and an eight-foot masonry wall.
And 40 foot tall.
Yeah, and 40 feet tall. So we're 70 feet.
Away from the people on like, on Eagle.
Yeah, a building limit line of 70 feet compared to 10 feet. R1 is 35 feet. We're at 40 feet, so we are five feet taller, but we're also 60 feet further away with an eight-foot masonry wall, 20-foot landscape buffer with six-inch caliper trees. So it's a significant difference in a better way than comparing what R1 would allow right there. You're going to see stockade fence, no trees, 35 feet tall.
Can I ask? We're not allowing any, we're not going to allow anybody to speak from that.
I just want to make sure, so rendering, we're seeing the same as what he's showing us.
Yes.
The box mentioned outside, maybe you don't, it makes more sense out than it's not always. Again, apologize for.
No, you're good. This, this is typical because our packet has to come out so early that as, as, you know, they had to have time to redesign it. And so what he's got is what we have, but not in our packet. We've all been emailed it, and we have the new design, and that's what's on his board, guys. Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question for Mr. Box? I'm looking at the mile section road. I mean, I think all of us probably are sitting here as, as these people are speaking about their neighborhood, which is a beautiful neighborhood, and it's unique in this area. In fact, the Eagle Lane and developments. But where the, the extents of the four lane, no one has, we've talked about South County Line Road, no one's really mentioned South Council Road. Is the one mile go to the extents of this development to County Line, or does it go to count, is it between County Line and Council? How long is the four lane that we're talking about?
Well, it'll be the full mile. So right now.
Okay.
Council's four lane, you can see it tapers to here.
Yeah, okay.
So we will take it from where it's four lane.
From there to County Line.
All the way to the intersection of County Line.
Okay.
So my client would be doing it for more, I guess, three-fourths of a mile.
Three-quarters of that.
Yeah.
So, well, that's what I was trying to get to is, you know, Council Road is, is not the same as County Line Road, and from a traffic point of view in my mind, that's a big distinction, as well as the large industrial complex that is Hobby Lobby and a number of other employment bases there. Okay, that was my, I just wanted to make sure I understood the traffic situation.
Sure. Just real quick, going down this path, looking at the possible road improvement, I, I should have asked you this already. I don't believe that the city would allow this developer to do this road improvement in the signalized intersection without there being, because you, you spoke to County Line not being any better because it just funnels back to two lane. But what you got to take into mind is that I don't believe they would allow this to happen, that they're committing to without, without turn, turn lanes at 29th and County Line Road. You can't, you can't put up a four-hanging, single-stop lights.
Yeah, no.
It is going to be a professional intersection, just like down on Count, 29th and Council. It will have turn lanes. It will help feed County Line even better.
Public Works will have to tell us.
Yes.
What the designs can have to meet city standards.
They have to build the intersection to city specifications with the signalized intersection. They're not going to let them go do like, you know, pick a town in, in Oklahoma that's a small town and hang four-stop lights and still keep it two-lane at the intersection.
David, what is the sequencing of the building of the road versus the development?
Well, I mean, so we're going to have to coordinate with Public Works. Obviously, my client committed to it late yesterday. So what we are hoping for today is a recommendation for approval. We will immediately get with Public Works and our engineers, their engineers, to understand what needs to happen from the city's standpoint for us to go expend great resources to build out the city street. We don't know what the right-of-ways look like through there, how much right-of-way is needed from what they have now, so we'll have to figure that out. My client's goal would be to do it very quickly when the city can get the necessary right-of-way. I mean, my client's goal is to build it themselves, pay for it themselves, and go do it to city specs, but we have to have a coordinated effort with Public Works to ensure we have the necessary right-of-way, and it's a design that meets with their approval.
And you have to deal with utility contractors.
Right. Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a thorough process, but you got someone on the hook that's willing to do it, and their interest is doing it sooner rather than later.
Right. No, I understand the complexities. I just didn't know if you guys were willing to commit something.
And the timeline on both projects, I mean, you're not going to throw this apartment complex up in a year and get it approved either.
No, this will be several years before anybody's moving it. Right. But my client can't close on the deal without the ability to go build it. And so what I'm asking for is the TE to say, developer, developer shall be required to pay for the widening of 29th from County Line going east to tie into the current four-lane section and the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of 29th and County Line, the details of which we will work out between now and when City Council hears this.
It's an awfully, it's an awfully big offer at the late hour of 5:00 PM yesterday. I don't understand how four, how that, that is a major commitment, and how, what are the, what are the mechanics driving that? I don't understand how this, this apartment development can justify that infrastructure improvement, even though the developer's willing to offer it. I don't see how that, I mean.
Well, I don't think that's relevant to your decision-making, right? Like, they're committed to do it. We're committed to, we'll tie it in somehow, but we got to have a level of understanding from Public Works as to how it works. But I think what you're asking.
If it can't be done financially, then it won't, the project won't be done.
Sure. Well, that's what I'm getting at is like, what, what's going on here that we don't know about, but?
Well, what you're really asking is like.
Please keep the conversations of the audience to a minimum, please.
I understand the question because, but you're really asking like, how do the economics work? I don't know that that's what's here before the plan can.
No, it's not.
Right, but with that being said, if this was to recommend approval and got approved through council, and they found out that it costs more to do the road improvement in the signalized intersection than what they thought, then they couldn't build the apartments either because it's tied to it.
We're going to find a way to tie it, and I have the utmost confidence in Councilwoman Peck that she's not going to let this go without the commitment. The concern we have on timing is not an us concern. My client's ready to go tomorrow. It's a, what right-of-way exists out there, and is it wide enough, and does the city need to go acquire the additional right-of-way to make this happen?
I think with what Commissioner Meek said, though, I mean, that's what I'm trying to focus on is, as long as it is tied to that, it's not going to be a, we made the offer, it's just the city couldn't get their, you know, act together and allow us to do it because of right-of-way issues, but we still have permission to build our development. As long as we have that solid, and that's what you're committing to, is like, you can't start construction on the units until that is fully drawn.
But I can't tie it today. Again, what I, what I've read is, is what, what we're asking, and then we will immediately get with Public Works and Councilwoman Peck next week to figure out what the logistics look like from what the city has, what they need to acquire, how quickly can they acquire it? Because my client is ready to go and pay and do it all themselves, but we're not a governmental entity.
Right, right.
All right, I've got my two cents, and then we can see where we are. You know, initially, I am a firm believer that a successful community neighborhood has, varies in housing types. So there is a stigma with apartments, understandably, but there's not, there are no studies out there that says that they decrease property values, confirmed studies that they decrease property values or increase crime. So that's not my, I, I'm in favor of apartments in the right place. I mean, not everyone can buy into a starter home right off, so there's a lot of young professionals. This is like a mile and a half from one of our community's largest employee, employers, and there's not a lot of multifamily in the area. And it is, it is, there's no denying that the applicant developer has offered some incredible concessions that we have not heard before. I mean, six-inch trees and the, and the, I mean, that's, that is big bucks. And we saw it two weeks ago, and I'll say it again, was that development in North Oklahoma City? I'm a firm believer that unit, developments of these size multifamily really belong at arterial intersections, and when I look out at the surrounding neighborhoods, it's, it's a lot of single-family, but where I really focus in on is just a mile and a half south. We've got a new turnpike corridor that, I don't know what the status is of all the land and all that, but there's a lot of vacant land or undeveloped land, I should say, and this really feels, and I didn't, I didn't believe this in the beginning, but after I look at it more, this really feels like this is not the best spot for this. There's, there's, I think there's more opportunities. That's not necessary. I think there's better opportunities a mile and a half south, and that's, that's specific to this application, and we look at these on a one-on-one, you know, basis, so.
I don't think it's a surprise to any of you guys that before this five o'clock concession on the road widening and signalized intersection, I was having a very hard time with this application. I, I don't know that I would have had the full support across the horseshoe here, but this changed things for me. Whether or not they find out it costs too much to do, and this thing dies on the vine because it's tied to it, or whether or not they can pull this off, that's unknown. This, this, like I said, with the six-inch trees, the brick, the eight-foot walls, and the road widening, the signalized intersection, and the stub street not coming out on South Eagle Lane, there was just so many things we were just chopping away at. I know that letter didn't represent everyone in this group or in this room or in this area. I understand that, and I was having a very hard time with this application, but like I said, the intersection and the road widening changed it for me, and I'm firm on tying it to this if this does proceed.
So I can't, I can't tie it as we sit here today. If we're gonna, if we're going to require it to be tied, we need a deferral. My client.
When I say tied to it, that I'm talking about a TE if we recommend approval, a TE that says your language.
Okay, and that, I have authority for that.
And I will read it in verbatim.
Okay.
I think, can I hear the language one more time?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Otherwise, I think I'm going to agree with the deferral, and I know that's not a comfort to neighbors, but I mean, I, I would still like to hear it.
Developer shall be required to pay for the widening of 29th from County Line going east to tie into the current four-lane section and the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of 29th and County Line.
Okay, I'm going to request that you change one thing. It's pay and install.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm hearing that we need, we need a little bit more specific language, that it is traffic signal and intersection improvements.
That's fine.
Okay. Then we can't say that the development is contingent on this in the recommendation?
I'm not hearing the tied to, there's no developing of apartments without that.
And I can't give you that today. We're committed to go figuring out between now and City Council. I don't know what the city, if I knew today that the city had all the necessary right-of-way, I'd say, great, because my client could go out there and start doing it, because they have a schedule of when they'd like to. But if we. Vertical and COs.
If we put a TE on it, it, to me, it's tied.
So you take a two-week deferral?
I would take a two-week deferral, but I can't.
I think you want to, just because you probably want to know a little more information on what the four-lane new intersection signalized is going to be.
Yeah.
Financially.
We just can't agree, we're not willing to commit to a timeframe today because of the unknown of what the right-of-way looks like.
And I want to say something to what Nate said, too, just about this being the mid-block. This, this area of Oklahoma City is developed from the west back to the east, which is kind of opposite of what most of developments have, and it, it kind of is the last piece before it goes back to industrial. So it is very different.
I agree, that's why it's not a precedent that's being set here. This is sort of the last piece to fill in, that's not already plotted and being developed, but I would rather, I mean, based on the, the community members, I mean, I wish they were proposing R1. I have a feeling that this infrastructure commitment is not going to pencil out, and so that doesn't still stop them from coming back and proposing an R1 development here, does it?
No.
But you can always do less, right? And I have a feeling that's probably likely.
Yeah, it just means there won't be.
A new road.
I'm not worried about the penciling, but if it isn't this developer, you're not going to get the street or the signal, for sure. That's just the reality.
And there's a specific plan requirement regardless.
Yeah, I was planning on adding a specific plan required with TE2, the language being read in for the road widening, the signalized intersections paid and installed, and the southeast and west masonry wall being added.
And the TE1 that's in there.
Existing TE1.
That it's, it's a gated, emergency-controlled access. Okay.
Yes.
But what, you know, the zoning goes with the property, so let's say they don't develop it. We've changed the zoning of the property to require.
But if someone bought it, they would have to widen the road and put in a signalized intersection to keep the same zoning. That's what I'm getting at.
So 2025 bond issue, this gets put on there to be widened, the next guy doesn't have to widen it. And it's already, I mean, I guess it's already widened, so what do we care? But it's, the concession went away.
It's not on there, on the bond issue.
So 2035.
2035, maybe. And by then, all these other additions are going to be affecting your lives, and that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
All right, where are we?
I like all the concessions, I like the road, but I don't know, I'm still, still, I'd almost like to see the deferral to find out more about the road.
Okay. And that certainly wouldn't preclude any further conversations, you know, with the neighbors about further concessions or opportunities for mutual agreement between now and then.
I'm happy to, Mr. Work, I mean, he mailed through snail mail a letter, I got no email. I became aware that he was involved because Ms. Powers jumped off a Zoom when I was talking to you. So the idea that, you know, I didn't negotiate with him, I'm told that there's a piece of mail sitting in my office that shows that he's involved. Until he showed up here at the podium, I was never directly told that he was involved.
Right. I.
That's not correct, but, you know, if we're gonna.
I'll send you all my emails, you guys can have access to it.
It, it's important, if I could just offer a comment, it is important from our standpoint that the language that is included in the design statement be clear before this is recommended for action to the City Council. The design statement, of course, will control the use and development of the property. The design statement language will, will be reviewed by plan review when an application for a building permit comes in. So it's critically important that the language of the design statement be clear and specific and precise, and so I think towards that, it would probably be appropriate for some additional time to be taken to get that language presented so that you know what you're recommending.
Sounds to me like that's where we're headed.
That's fine. I want to add one thing, that on the letter from the people you're representing, Mr. Work, they wanted a TE that wouldn't allow the apartments to be built, tell there's appropriate four-lane street on 29th Street between County Line, County Line Road and Council and a signalized intersection at Southwest 29th Street and County Line Road. Their first option was cannot agree, not feasible, and the developer has to pay significant impact fees. Then they have changed this. Even if we kept this TE on there and you added a sentence at the end, to be, to be built by the city of Oklahoma City or paid for by the, paid for and installed by the developer, they could not build these apartments until it was done. So.
Or could not receive occupancy permits.
Correct.
And that's why we just, we got to understand from the city, what, what does their timeframe look like to go get the right-of-way necessary before we commit, because we're not closing on the property until we have antutamus to go build.
Right.
So we're happy to take the two weeks. I guess what I would ask the chair, in the interest of everyone's time, I don't want to come back in two weeks and have another hour and a half discussion about how we don't want apartments. Like, hopefully in two weeks, we're here to talk about.
I feel like.
Here's the language we can agree to. Not saying everyone's going to vote for it, but I don't know that it makes any sense to go through all this again.
I agree.
I, I mean, I think you've heard, I think you've heard everything. I, I mean, I think you've heard, I think you've heard everything. Is, is there anything that anyone's holding back? No, I think it's all been said. Okay, just need a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Um, I need to pull up the language.
Uh, October 10th.
Two weeks.
Got the date?
Yeah.
Okay. I recommend we, recommend we defer PUD 2029 to the October 10th meeting.
A motion from Commissioner Meek to defer the item to the October 10th meeting.
What am I doing wrong here?
All right. Ben.
Ben disappeared.
Timed out.
And we're back.
All right, the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. That item passes. We'll see it again on the 10th. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Uh, any additional items? Communications and reports, planning commission committees? All right. All right. Uh, planning commission members, Commissioner Meek?
Nothing.
Mr. Privet?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
No?
The chairman.
Yep.
Citizens to be heard.
Okay, we'll get there. Uh, planning department.
Nothing.
That's the municipal councilor's office. All right, item seven, citizens to be heard. Citizens to be heard are up. Do you have a, do you have a speaker sheet?
Yeah, I did. I gave it to you earlier.
Uh, it would be, it would be for this item. You can fill it out afterward.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If I could ask the, if I could ask the audience to please exit the chambers and hold your conversations outside. We're still trying to wrap up our meeting.
Okay. Hi, I, um, my name is Maya Whitehead. Again, I spoke, uh, earlier today around, at the onset of the meeting. I live at 2136 Northeast 14th Street. Um, I'm my home, I'm the lawful homeowner on lots one and two of block eight of White Orchard addition to Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, according to the record plat thereof. Um, I just wanted to clear up something. I said that I would be available at the September 30th meeting. I will not be. I will be at a courthouse in Arizona, so I will not be able to attend. And I also wanted to clarify for the posterity of the record that we, uh, the neighborhood, we received notice of the first, uh, application. Uh, I want to say on, it wasn't through the mail. They put it in our mail slot, uh, two days prior to, I think it was like September 2nd or something like that, all of us. So we're, I'm just asking on behalf of all the neighbors, especially what we have elderly neighbors that we have more notice of these things. Uh, there was a flyer, uh, sent Saturday in my mail, Saturday where I checked, for uh, that September 30th meeting. And I think Saturday was the 24th, so six days. So that's not a lot of notice. So we just, I'm just asking that we get more notice.
I'm confident that placekeepers is more than willing to meet with you individually outside the 30th. I'm committed to that. I'll give you my contact information as well. I'm confident they're going to be willing to meet with you and any other specific neighbors. They're committed to it.
Thank you. Because the neighbors are, I had to knock on each door and they were kind of, you know, um, some of them are a lot older and they were distrustful of opening their door.
Mm-hmm.
But I had to knock on their door. So, um, I, I, I think sometimes those tactics might be a little bit better, but yeah.
My understanding is that placekeepers is, is planning to knock on doors ahead of the meeting on, on Monday.
Okay.
But again, they're still committed to other meetings as needed with neighbors.
Okay.
So not, not worried on this one. They're going to, they're going to meet with you.
That's all I wanted to add. Thank you so much. I'll take your contact information.
Thank you. All right, uh, other business? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.